Good evening. I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Encinitas City Council for Wednesday, June 12th of 2024, and the time is 6:00 PM. And if the clerk would please call the roll.
Here.
Here.
I will note that Councilmember Henzie is absent. The agenda did reflect that she would be teleconferencing, but she is not. She is absent this evening. Uh, Deputy Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
And Mayor Krantz?
Here.
Record will reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Henzie is absent.
All right. Very good. Thank you. And if you would, if you could, please rise and join me in the pledge, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And tonight we are going to starter meeting with a special presentation from the North County Transit District. And I see the team here, including our former Director of Development Services, Lillian is here. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. I'm Sean Donaghy. I'm the CEO for the North County Transit District for almost three and a half months now. It's been very, it's been great to get out to communities and really have a conversation about what we're trying to do from a transit perspective. We've got a lot of good projects on the horizon. And we've been very fortunate to really be involved at a sort of a bigger level. Some people may not know that we, as an organization, are an owner of the railroad, which is not common in our business. Most public transit agencies don't do that. We're actually one of three public transit agencies in the nation that run hybrid rail, commuter rail, and run operate bus service. So we're pretty excited about that. Lillian Doherty is here with us today. She's going to give you a little bit of an updated, a little later in the presentation about quiet zones. But I just kind of wanted to, let's see if I can turn this on. Oh, there we go. Just to kind of give you an overview of some of the services that we have, the coaster, which is our commuter rail, the brief service, which is our bus, Sprinter, which is our hybrid rail, Flex, our paratransit service, and or Lyft, which is our paratransit service, Flex, which we operate in two cities, and then NCTD Plus, which we just launched yesterday, or Monday, I'm sorry, in San Marcos, and we have Oceanside on the map, as well as Fallbrook, which will be coming pretty soon, too. So right now, the pilot for NCTD Plus, we just started yesterday in San Marcos. This is sort of our, our area here that we service in Encinitas. There's quite a bit of activity, I think you can see on this map. I think one of the things that we'll talk about when we show the slide that is specific to the priorities of the agency and something that's always been important to me when we've done, as long as I've been working in public transit is it really has to be connectivity to everything. Like, the perfect transit line for us has to include robust economic development. It has to have access to jobs. It has to be a jobs creator, has to have access to education, and it really has to be a quality of life driver. There are a lot of cities, I think, that are struggling with aging in place, access to healthcare, access for residents who don't want to leave, and they need that robust public transit option. I think we do a pretty good job of that. One of the things that we've recently changed is sort of our, what we're calling our North Star. It sort of hits five different pieces for us, and I think it's a little bit of a shift from what we've historically done, where we had very specific strategic goals that were related to projects. And I think what we would prefer to do as an agency is, we want to be able to touch every single one of these categories when we talk about projects that we do, from, from the smallest of projects to the largest of projects that might be multi-jurisdictional, might be with Sandag, might be not even a transit-related project that we want to support. And some of those, I think, are, the first one for us is world-class customer experience, safety and security. You know, for us, that's really improving reliability and frequency, growing the customer experience, things like bringing in new real-time information. From a safety and security standpoint, it's upgrade of our positive train control system. Continued focus for the district sheriff and security team. I think one of the things that we've heard loud and clear, especially at some of our transit centers, are we want a more robust security presence throughout the day and the night, and so we're working on that. In fact, the budget that will be going to our board here in June includes a pretty significant increase in our security budget. And, you know, that was intentional. We want to make sure that we have a presence, not only throughout the system, but at the transit centers themselves. The other piece, of course, is fiscal duty. You know, one thing that we struggle with a little bit is really pursuing additional funding sources. Our funding sources are fairly locked in. We really need to find new ways to grow that, that funding source. Aggressively find grant opportunities to improve capital, focus on management of our consultants. I think for the past few years, we've had maybe a few too many consultants on our payroll to help us manage some of our larger projects. And the reality is, we have staff internally that have the expertise to do that, so we're looking at that as well. Evaluation of fare simplification and coaster zone fares is a big deal for us. And then really a shift in local, regional, and federal, sort of our approach to that, and how we want to partner locally and regionally, at the state level and at the federal level, on how we're aggressively finding funding sources for capital projects for not only the short term, but long term. How many projects can we do in-house versus working those through the MPO? That's been a little bit of a, is, opportunity that we've been working on with Sandag that sometimes smaller projects that we have get lost in the mix. The best example I can give you is for us to be able to do corridor studies, we have to run those through the MPO. That's probably not the best use of their time or energy. We could probably do that on our own. And we know what North County cities want, and we should be able to do those without having to manage that. Equity, environmental, and economic justice. You know, we want to be involved in land use and transit projects. We, we already are to some extent, but we really want to manage, especially property that we own, what that will be in the future, how it's helping people in the community. We want to have a better space and the partnerships, not only with the city, but businesses that may develop on that land to make sure that we're getting the best use of the land possible. Continued efforts on bluff erosion mitigation, really understanding workforce and affordable housing and how it can be applied to not only transit-oriented development, but development in general. And then from a service perspective, you know, we want to manage the need for essential workers. I think the 78 corridor is probably the best example of that, that through the pandemic, there was still a pretty good ridership in the 78 corridor. We did lose a little bit of ridership along the coaster line, but I think that was expected with some of the work from home that we took off of that line into San Diego. Really supporting local economies through robust transit options and our focus on the youth opportunity pass. You know, we continue to see ridership gains by providing an opportunity for youth to ride the service. You know, the last thing we want is for transit to be a barrier for our youth, and so managing that expectation is a big deal for us. Community and governmental stewardship. I think this is a big one for me. From an agency standpoint, and we've told our board this many times, for me, we need to be able to use the agency to push projects that aren't necessarily transit-related. You know, we are a part of this community, and we need to apply our backing to projects that may be important to economic development or quality of life for other cities that reside within the district that may or may not have a transit component to it. It's really about all of us working together to make sure that we're focusing on what the community needs. It's not just about public transit. We all have to work together to be able to do that. And really, that relationship piece is a big deal for us. You know, we've got a really good team on that end that works hard in Sacramento, works hard in DC. We're a known quantity at the FTA level. We're a known quantity with our state representatives as well, so when we're asking for those fund, that funding opportunity or we're asking for those grants, we're being taken very seriously as an agency. And so one thing that we've told our board is, in addition to that, is tell us what other projects you're working on. So when we go to DC, we can talk about those as well. And then the last piece there is kind of our team. You know, employees really have to have the tools necessary to be successful. I think a lot of organizations think about the projects and the things that they want to do in a longer-term sense. They don't think about how that's going to affect the employees or the cities that are represented all the way down line. We have to get city staff involved. We have to get our own team involved and think about how those things are going to impact our folks in the greater sense. Really, it's from a projects and initiative standpoint, you know, low-sand double-tracking is a big deal for us. Sandaguitos and the Bataquitos Lagoon double-track are two projects that we're working on right now that will have some significant impact on our ability to manage the corridor and improve reliability within there. Signal optimization is a big one for us, and wayfinding and improved signage. And that is not just related to the coaster corridor. That is to the entire system. And we have plenty of opportunity along our breeze lines to sort of improve the wayfinding and signage so that there's good connectivity between the roles. Expanded partnerships to create short and long-term successful outcomes for communities. I think that's all of us. One thing that I've done, and Mary Dover, our Chief of Staff, who's here today, we've reached out to, to try to set appointments with all of the city management of the cities. And we want to talk to the city management. We want to talk to your planning developers. And one thing that I was accustomed to in a previous life was, we got copied on every permit that went to the city. And the rationale behind that was, it's easier for us to have a conversation about public transit before you build it than it is for us to try to build it into it later. And I think that goes into the responsibility of, if there are street adjustments that need to be made, if there are ADA improvements that need to be made, the Transit District can help sort of push those along while we see those development pieces happening. It's just nice for us to have a seat in the back of the room and raise our hand once in a while and say, hey, we can help out with that. Where can we fit into that equation? Attend community events and expand involvement at the city-county planning levels. And our marketing team is working on this right now. A big piece for us is, we want to live the brand of our communities. So if our community is doing something, we want to be there. We want to celebrate that, and we want to be a part of it. So I think you're going to see a little more activity in that run. And I'll have Lillian come up and talk about quiet zones, but before we jump into that, I just want to say, you know, very, very fortunate to have Councilor Henzie on our board, and I also want to say thank you to Mayor Krantz. I don't think that NCTD would be the agency that it is today without your leadership. And there are still a lot of things that we see that you have done for our agency internally, and I'm just very thankful for the work that you've done. And Councilor Henzie has done an amazing job as well, so very thankful for that. And that's a lot. We tried to cram into five minutes there. Before I bring Lillian up, are there any questions that the council may have for me?
Nope. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Local and mode of engineers are required pursuant to Title 49 of Part 222 of the Code of Federal Regulations to sound their horns 15 to 20 seconds before entering into a public highway rail crossing. That horn noise can be mitigated by local jurisdictions, such as the project that the city of Encinitas is undertaking through the implementation of a quiet zone. The train, the Quiet Zone Implementation Manual was intended to provide a tool so that residents, staff, and all stakeholders in the Quiet Zone process can get on the same page, better understand the difficult and complicated regulatory framework that surrounds the implementation, and ultimately, the operation of these long-term projects. The Quiet Zone provides specific tools that I'd just like to highlight, a risk calculator, a rough order of magnitude estimator, and examples of preferred safety measures that the FRA, the Federal Rail Administration, prefers to see within these areas. Next slide. One of the items that I'd really like to highlight today that is in the Quiet Zone manual is the sample timeline. I caution that this 60-month period that is depicted here makes the assumption that the Quiet Zone effort is resourced and funded from beginning to end. In addition, I'd also like to point out that, in addition to planning and design, there is a long-term requirement. I'd like to call your attention to that last bullet within the, within, within the slide, the affirmation process. What is required there is, on a cyclical basis, operators of quiet zones are required between two and a half to five years to provide a written statement to the FRA that indicates that the quiet zone has not been altered, that it continues to operate as designed, and also provides updated traffic counts. In addition, FRA inspectors can enter the property at any time. And if found to be non-compliant, the Quiet Zone can be paused temporarily, and the withdrawal of the Quiet Zone status considered. These are all really critical aspects that we consider as part of this project, and I thought it would be important to bring them forward for you today to consider. I'd like to pause here and ask whether there are any questions with respect to the implementation of a quiet zone.
Yeah, on civil obedience, how it supports pointing out whether it's an accident or suicide.
Yeah, it's not from you. It's from the council. Does the council have any questions? No, I appreciate you laying that out, though, and we will likely have a update on this coming up in August. And we'll be working with our contractor rail pros for that presentation, so perhaps you'll be a part of that.
I would be happy to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. I appreciate all the efforts that you guys are making, and it is, there, the amount of effort that we put into land use when it came to NCTD was a big focus when I was on the board. And it's clear that you guys have made great strides. There's quite a few projects that are being looked at. And Tracy, I know, has been in the middle of all that for a very long time. I also was pleased to see, when I rode my bike up Santa Fe Drive, that we're pouring concrete for bus pads that have been placed in really ideal locations for pedestrian crossing of students there. So I'm looking forward to having that all completed and, and new, new facilities in there. So thank you very much. Appreciate you coming tonight to make the presentation. Okay. Next, we'll move on to oral communications.
We do approximately six at the moment. Just a reminder, oral communications is the time to speak on items that are not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes. First three speakers, Geraldine Kessler, David Hill, and then Christine Schindler.
I want to thank the city for the installation of the recent plaques for the Heritage Grove trees on Melba Road. But I was wondering why no one in the neighborhood or the applicants were notified of this plaque would be installed. Also curious if we could have gotten a bigger plaque stating the, are entering the historical heritage grove, because it is the first in Encinitas. I would have paid something, for something a little bit bigger, and I'm sure others would have contributed. Is there any way we could get this done? And there are several more trees that are in the grove besides those two plaques. I also want to speak about the potential environmental nightmare density bonus project on Melba Road that is slated to take down 173 trees, 30 smaller trees and native shrubs, and demo three beautiful historical homes built in 1938. Now that we have been forced to conclude our review of the DEIR, we sit and wait. It feels like the calm before the storm for the neighborhood. And just let me remind you that we have longtime senior citizens in this early area who simply want to age in place and not deal with the loss of the tree canopy. I decided to listen to the Planning Commission meeting to see how it was going to be without Kevin and take that temperature with a new chair. I was a little disappointed for a few reasons. The new commissioner was not present, and they started the work plan for the year without his feedback. It seems the new chair is more concerned with increasing the housing with his development background. I did not get the feeling he would be standing up for the citizens for any open space left in our town, which I found a little depressing. One of the commissioners was attempting to get some protections and guidelines at this meeting, and he got little support from the other commissioners. I also respect the lawyer on the commission, but I'm fearful that her lens may be clouded. I just have one quick audio thing that I want to talk about.
Geraldine, sorry, over. One item I didn't get to that I meant to mention to you is that we do have a couple palm trees that are about to fall over on the driveway that we're planning to remove in order to avoid the bore beetle from spreading.
Okay, you can pause it. So I got that message in November, and then, like I said, he took seven trees down. And he didn't inform anybody in the public. So anyway, thank you for listening. Please support us with preservation of this property.
Thank you.
David Hill, followed by Christine Schindler, followed by John Joseph Hawkins.
Good evening. David Hill, representing Bataquitos Lagoon. And following up on, since the city is the lead agency for the environmental concerns of La Costa 48. Okay. And that is the development of 49 or 48 homes and, and roads. We received Bataquitos Lagoon a public notice back in April, I mean, excuse me, yeah, April the 15th. And there was a timely submission of our objections and comments to the public notice. And that was regards to closure of the hazardous materials that are buried on the property, some 7,500 cubic yards, maybe a little less, maybe a little more, not quite sure. But this map was not available back in December, when I came here before, well, before the Planning Commission. They said, no, we don't have this map. Well, now it is available. It was available on the GeoTracker, the Regional Water Quality Control Board website. Okay. The fact is that we did some sampling, the Bataquitos Lagoon, we sampled the lagoon, the benefit layers off the western property, as well as to the west of I-5. And we found hazardous materials. We also sampled in February, the 29th. And I sent the samples and, and all the, what could it say, the analytical report to the San Diego County Department Environmental Health and Quality. I talked to John Sonahu, and he says that the environmental consultant for La Costa 48 was supposed to be responding to our four-page letter with regards to the, the sampling that we found. And what we have found in the lagoon is the organic chlorine pesticides, which are pathogens, teratogens, and they are of reportable quantities. The fact is, they want to encapsulate not only the 7,000 tons, but the thing is, the site is leaching outside of this encapsulation into the lagoon. Now, if we talk about cleanups, we're talking about maybe $100 million, maybe more, that would put this city at risk, could even bankrupt the city. Figure that one out. That's one issue that needs to be responded to. Since you are the lead agency, we need to get a response from you on this issue.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Christine Schindler, I live in Encinitas. And I wanted to share some information today that we've been going through in our city cycling classes that I thought would be good for the council, staff, and the public to hear regarding a couple of new California laws. I also wanted to put another shameless plug in about our special 55-plus community cycling class that we're doing this month. Our classes are full of kids and, and parents, and sometimes the adults get kind of overlooked, so we want to do a special session for them. It's happening tomorrow online as a webinar. And then we also have an in-person class happening at the end of the month. There are flyers out in the lobby. If you're at all interested, I encourage you to join in. And we thank the city for sponsoring that. We're partnering with Scripps Health, and we hope to do it throughout the region. So in 2023, last year, we had two new laws I want to make sure people know about. Pedestrians can cross the street anywhere. We know that the safest place is at a crosswalk or at a, a traffic signal. This actually makes jaywalking no more. And we just want to have bike riders, other pedestrians, car drivers aware that pedestrians could be crossing at any point in the road so that we're all aware of each other and taking care of each other. Another law is if you have two lanes of traffic going in the same direction, it's now required that you not just give three feet of space, but you actually change lanes when you're coming to pass a bicyclist. Best for the bicyclist to put it, be in the middle of the lane if there's no bike lane, to, to be most visible and to actually force the car driver to do the right thing according to the law. And then this year, we have two new laws I wanted to make you aware of. One is to protect drivers, protect pedestrians, protect, protect, sorry, bicyclists as well. It's called daylighting. It's opening up intersections and crosswalks by not allowing parking to happen in those areas 20 feet within the intersections and the crosswalks. Just making it so everybody's more visible to each other, and we don't have to look around parked cars. Now, I know you're not going to paint all those curbs red, and I know law enforcement's not going to be able to ticket everybody. But we just want to get the word out there that this exists. It's a good idea. It's a best practice. And we just want to be mindful of where we're parking and what we might be obstructing. And then there's another law. There's a lead pedestrian interval for crosswalks, which gives pedestrians a chance to get in and across the intersection before the cars are moving. Now bikes can do that as well. So not in the crosswalk, but they can cross at the same time. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next speakers, John Hawkins, followed by Scott Campbell, and then Peggy Walker.
Hi, I'm John Hawkins, John Joseph Hawkins III. I came up and I signed up as my topic is civil obedience. That's because, part of the reason for this meeting is, far as I know, behind it, which I want to say, if I don't get their name wrong, Susie Mendoza is back there, ex-marine, and she's going to come up and talk as well as about this. But I grew up in this town.
Can you speak into this carefully so I can hear you?
This town is very special to me. I grew up here. I grew up as, starting as farming and changing to completely commercial zone, which I see wrong, especially towards feeding future generations. You know, we should be trying to put in Wooford Acts to like go ahead and projects to go ahead and support the organic farming and living here, as well as the beach culture. Instead, we're railroading it with hotels and everything else. And I get we have a higher population, but we also have people from the outside moving in just because we have the internet, you know, and they see it as a popular zone. You know, I've seen my own family terrorized since I was 10 years old in this town, but I still love this town. I still love the people in it. I still love the people that try to hold it still, right? But there isn't a difference between people being forced homeless on the streets for wrong reasons, you know, and what's rightfully happening. You've got undercovers that literally set up people around this town to force them on the streets. And I was hoping Robbie, Robbie Rodriguez was going to be here with his transitional housing, which is a skateboard setup with basically a tent on top of it that you can either sit down in or lay down in it because it extends, you know? But the only thing I think he needs is a break on it. It's supposed to handle going down like It's supposed to handle going down like extreme hills, as well as just being on the flats and allowing someone to have something to separate them from the sun, you know? You've got people dealing with malnutrition, sleep deprivation, over sun exposure, and getting told they're on methamphetamines when they're not. And then when they're not on methamphetamines or wouldn't do it, people slipping through them, you know? You've got so many things to deal with in this society that when people point fingers at the homeless, but I watch the trash fly off their cars and their coffee mugs, and they don't go around picking them up too like everyone else, they're just pointing the finger, you know? And that isn't cool. Like, it takes a whole village to raise a child, so we got to look at them like they're all our children. No matter how hard we slip, we got to push them up above us, just like everybody else. Women, children, elders first, and that's what's something that's lacking from this society, civil obedience, you know? I don't want to see the projects going here. I want to see the Low Income Housing Act that made it so we could go ahead, excuse me, the Low Income Housing Act that made it so we could do the garage conversion permits and put a condo into a garage so someone could have a single dwelling or a whole family household in a garage, you know? Like, rather than on the streets or put into a giant projects with everyone being gangsters towards each other. Like, you want to find an end to this? You want to find peace?
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, Scott Campbell, and then Peggy Walker.
That was quite a speech. Good evening, commissioners. Kelly, I'm glad you're out of the sun right now. Came up here to talk about a few things. First off, the Academy Another Class, the cake was delicious. Thank you. On the drive here, I'd like to notice things, and this has been consistent with the lane diets on Vulcan, the traffic heading northbound, I'd say 95% of cars are driving in the bike lane, and that's because they're taking their own personal safety into account, and this is just something I want you to think about. The gentleman talked about the coaster and all that stuff. I used to take the Coaster Connection 20 years ago, and it was pretty nice. On Fridays, I skateboard in Suriname Valley and get on it, jump over my back fence on Encinitas Boulevard. It was pretty fun. But he also mentioned double tracking, and Mayor, you've mentioned this, I saw this in the paper, about double tracking of Bataquitos. It's really time to get on somebody to find out what the plans are for double tracking through the Cadea, because we're making a lot of plans, and then double tracking could really mess those up, I think. I can't wait to hear how the land negotiations are going for the fire station. That's really good. You know what small beach towns do? They stay quiet. They don't try to be first in anything. They try to be under the cover. They don't promote, because they don't, if they promote, they're not going to be small beach towns anymore. It was really nice that that last gentleman brought it up. And I have, there's just one more thing. It's, you know, there's, I'd say, three people in this room that have said yes, and I hope I can get two more to say yes right now. I'll let you know, I've talked to Rosette from the League of Women's Voters, and there's going to be some, a lot of coordination going on. And, okay, so I just hope you agree pretty soon, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
I'm Peggy Walker with Sandagito Alliance for Drug-Free Youth. I just want to say first, thank you for all of your work. You know us at Sandagito Alliance as health educators. We receive research and data regarding vape and smoke products and other nicotine and marijuana products that are chewed, ingested, or drunk, and we just received a California Department of Public Health advisory, which I passed to you, warning consumers not to drink Mary Jones hemp-infused sodas, which have been identified as containing prohibited, intoxicating THC isolate ingredients. Because these allele products are inaccurately labeled and contained prohibited intoxicating ingredients, they pose a risk to consumers, according to the California Department of Health. And I know it's confusing. There is cannabis-based THC, and there is hemp-derived THC, which is a synthetic. I come here and bring this tonight because assessment shows that Mary Jones drinks, which you'll see on that flyer, come with both cannabis-infused and hemp-infused THC and other hemp-derived edible products. These have been identified for sale at local retail outlets. We wanted to call attention to them. Sandagito Alliance works with partner parents, educators, and health professionals to keep kids drug-free and informed of drug use risks and harms. Assessment shows us that a constantly changing and questionable supply of hemp and weed products are popping up from manufacturers who attempt to circumvent the rules, and they are sold in smaller retail stores, often with no age or ID checks. Often, these retail clerks don't know what they're selling. That leads us to suggest that more code enforcement may be in order, in order to identify the increase in illegal products on shelves and to inform retail operators what is and is not prohibited. This and pictures of prohibited products would help lessen the confusion and create a safer marketplace for kids. I thank you for your attention.
Mayor, that does conclude oral communications.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Bless you. So that takes us to our report from closed session, and I would like to ask the city attorney to provide that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At approximately 4:00 PM, the city council recessed in a closed session. They recessed back out of closed session at approximately 5:30. When in closed session, they discussed five items. The first two, closed session conference with real property negotiator under the authority of government code 54956.8, two properties, one at 2946 Lone Jack Road, number 29, Encinitas, California. The second one, also on Lone Jack Road, APN number 264-180-17-00, and the city council took no reportable action while in closed session on those two items. The third item, closed session conference with legal counsel, whether to initiate litigation under the authority of government code section 54956.9D4. One item, the property, the item in question was 1478 Neptune and 1480 Neptune Avenue. And please note, there was a correction to the closed session agenda to correct the actual addresses on Neptune Avenue. This is one parcel, two duplexes. The city council took no reportable action when in closed session on item number three. On the fourth item, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, a newer case, Pierce versus City of Encinitas at all, the city council took no reportable action in closed session. And the final case, final matter, closed session, public employee performance evaluation under the government code section 54957, title, city manager, city council similarly took no reportable action when in closed session. And that concludes the closed session report.
Okay, thank you. And, Madam Clerk, could you report the changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the posted agenda except for item 8E. There was a typo correction. It just changed to reference to Senior Citizen Commission to Park and Recreation Commission. Item 8M, there was one update to remove a parcel that paid, so there was one item that was removed from that, so that item was updated. And then item 8N, which was AB 43 speed limits, there was an updated map, and that was provided. All items were posted to the agenda and provided the city council.
Okay.
And then, were you going to report?
Yeah, item 8O, we will hear that item in the action section as item 10D, basically, between the current 10C and 10D, I should say. So right after the Beacons Beach, we will hear the item related to the moving, the shift proposal to shift funding from a couple of projects to the Stormwater project.
And then moving to the consent calendar, item 8D has been pulled by Councilmember Aylers. Item 8F, 8G, and 8H have been removed by members of the public. And then Councilmember Aylers, do your report. There's voting no on item 8D.
D as in dog?
D as in dog, yes. Not pulling the item, just registering a no vote.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember, I mean, sorry, Mayor Krantz, I would, I just make a statement that I was intending to pull item 8F as well, but I see it was already pulled by the public.
Correction, I do have item 8D has been pulled by members of the public. D as in dog.
D as in dog.
And I'm sorry, Councilmember, which item were you pulling?
8F.
So 8F has been pulled by members of the public.
So run through the pulled items again.
The pulled items are item 8D, 8F, 8G, and 8H.
Did you say B as in boy or?
D as in dog.
D as in dog, yeah, thank you.
And 8G as in golf?
Golf.
And 8H as in hotel?
Yes.
Okay, and I would also like to pull item 8E as in echo, so we've got a collection. So that leaves item 8A, 8B, 8C, 8I, 8J, 8K, 8L, 8M, 8N, 8P, and 8Q on consent.
I'll move approval. I'll second that.
Motion carries with Councilmember Hinsey absent, and that takes us to item 8D.
D as in dog. Can you do a quick, quick presentation, please?
Good evening, Mayor Krantz and city council. My name is Madeline Wampler, Sustainability Analyst with the Sustainability Division. Tonight is the adoption hearing for the Green Building Ordinance 2024-04, introduced on May 15, 2024. In summary, the proposed ordinance aims to amend the Encinitas Municipal Code to enhance energy efficiency and green building practices. This action supports our climate action plan goals by targeting natural gas emissions. The ordinance sets higher energy performance standards for new residential construction, surpassing state code requirements. This encourages electrification while allowing for mixed fuel options with additional efficiency measures. Exemptions for the high-performance standards include single-family dwellings under 1,500 square feet, high-rise multifamily structures, and non-residential buildings. For all new residential buildings with gas appliances, the ordinance proposes enhanced electric readiness standards to facilitate future transition to electric systems. This ordinance represents a balanced approach for advancing our climate goals while remaining compliant with state and federal law. Staff recommends city council adopt ordinance 2024-04 to further our sustainability efforts. Thank you, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you. Member of the public?
We have two speakers, Harold Standifer, followed by Serena Pelka.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. I stepped before you again tonight to speak in support of this ordinance, and I strongly encourage you to support and pass it this evening. You've heard all the good reasons why from staff. It is an important step in the moving to meet our goals in our climate action plan. I'm speaking to you tonight as a citizen of Encinitas, a resident, and also representing the Sierra Club. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Serena Pelka. I'm a policy advocate at Climate Action Campaign, where our mission is to create a zero-carbon future through effective and equitable policy action. In order to improve quality of life across the region in Encinitas, we need building electrification to be prioritized. We are thrilled to see the city doing this tonight. When we electrify, we're moving closer to our emissions reduction goals, protecting the climate, and bringing public health and air quality benefits to our neighborhoods. We support your ongoing leadership to implement the city's climate action plan goals to decarbonize buildings for healthier communities and the climate. We also thank city staff for your hard work to find and implement an alternative impactful policy pathway for building electrification. The city of Encinitas is once again leading by example by adopting this High Performance Reach Code, which we hope will set the pace for building electrification policy across the region. We support the city adopting this ordinance and continuing to explore all opportunities to decarbonize. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to move approval of this item.
I would second it.
And motion carries with Councilmember Aylers voting no and Councilmember Hinsey absent.
Okay, thank you.
Takes us to item 8E, and that was pulled by Councilmember Krantz and Councilmember Aylers.
Thank you. Councilmember Aylers, do you need a report?
No, I don't. I just have one thing I wanted the council to consider adding.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I thought it might be a good time to throw out there, would we want to add to the work plan considering possible uses for Surfers Point over the next year? I thought that might be an item that we could assign to, to the work plan.
I don't necessarily see any problem with that. One suggestion that I would make, I was already planning to bring an agenda item in August and maybe make it a joint meeting with the planning, excuse me, with the Parks Department.
Either way works.
That way, we have, we make sure that we've given direction and the work that they will be doing is consistent with what we have. It would be in the form of a workshop, and we'd hear from the public and have that conversation. So that's, that's coming. You know, I don't mind adding it, but maybe, maybe we should do it at that meeting?
Okay, I was just thinking, adding it to their work plan so they could assign subcommittees or whatever, and it could be a very general, consider options for Surfers Point jointly with the city council. However, I'm open to any wording. I just thought, hey, that's an item that would be a good one for us to get started on and start considering what options and what we could do, and how better to do it than have the Parks and Rec Commission take a look at it.
Yeah, I think it's important to have them engaged. I also think that the Environmental Commission might have some, you know, input because of the, you know, the opportunity for native plant rehab, that sort of thing. I also will likely be, have more information about, it was mentioned, the Bataquitos Lagoon Double Tracking Project. There are currently plans by Sandag to ingress and egress to the south side of the lagoon from their easement that is on that property. So we're working on trying to come up with a plan that doesn't have the significant impact that they're currently planning. So that's why the things that will be happening in August are going to be very important. I don't really have any problem making the amendment, but I think maybe the better approach would be to talk about it at that meeting and then just kind of say, hey, this is a modification to your work plan.
Yeah, I'm open. It's just, I thought something, this is the annual time when we look at it, and I thought, good time to do it. I'm open to either way. As long as it's already on our agenda, then we can make it on their agenda then.
Yep. Well, we're going to have a good opportunity to, you know, provide input to the work plan coming up in August.
So I'll move approval of?
I have one, one thing that I want to add. Item six of the work plan looks at review and monitor tennis court and pickleball court use in city parks, and it says commissioners will monitor and review tennis and pickleball court use to make recommendations on future usage. Commissioners also will review the results of the feasibility study underway for sport court planning at the Encinitas Community Park. I look forward to seeing that update of the sport court planning at Encinitas Community Park. That's something that we included in the budget a couple of years ago and looking forward to seeing that. I also would like to expand that in one way, which would be to look at the possibility of removing the tennis court from the portion of the park that's west of 101. There's a single tennis court there, and to see if there's a way. And to see if there's a way to fit that into the area of the park that's on the east side of the 101. So I was there the other day, and there were basketball courts there that maybe instead of having basketball courts, we could replace it with tennis court. But I know how important pickleball is. I don't want to have a net loss of any of these courts, but I was provided with a Riparian Task Force report that was written about 25 years ago, and there was, they envisioned reestablishing the wetland more effectively on the west side of the 101, and it is a very important tool in our stormwater process. And so looking at ways that we may modify that park to make it more of a, a more effective wetland is also an important part of what I'd like to see happen over there. So just wanted to, it doesn't really require a whole lot of change to the language here, but I want to make a point that those courts and looking at the Moonlight Beach, that Cottonwood Creek on the west side of the 101 might be removed. So Councilmember Lines, did you want to add?
No, you just answered my question, so, as you were speaking, so I don't have a question.
Okay, very good. So then, Councilmember Aylers?
Now move approval of this item with your addition, is that to item 10, to investigate the possible move of the court from the west side to the east side?
Item 6 on page 8 of 9.
Item 6, sorry, I got the wrong one.
Item 6.
Okay.
Yes.
So move approval of this item with the investigation you stated added to item 6.
All right, I'll second that.
And just to be clear, it's to investigate moving the tennis court from the west side to the east side?
The west side, Cottonwood Creek, to the east side, yes, Cottonwood Creek Park. And there are two tennis courts on the east side.
On the west side.
And look at the basketball court or whatever you can do there. There's a lot of grass, I don't know, but that's a pretty popular park, and figuring out a way to replace that one tennis court, I hope we can, we can manage that.
And the motion does carry with Councilmember Hinzey absent, takes us to item 8F.
8F.
And we have one speaker on that item.
Okay.
Do you want to hear from the speaker? Karen, where's Karen?
Yes.
Could we also have a staff report?
That's me. So tonight before you, council, is, the recommended action is to approve an agreement for Federal Legislative Consulting Services Agreement with Carpe and Clay, Inc., for a period of three years, for a total not to exceed $180,000, with a possible option of two additional one-year terms, for a total not to exceed $303,624 for a five-year term. Our federal legislative consultant generally, for the most part, helps with our sand replenishment project, which is done through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. That's the majority of this contract. They also do help with procuring grant opportunities for several other projects within the city. To give you an idea of how much money we've received in grants, federal grants since 2017, it's been a little over $36 million. $28 million was for sand, but we did receive $4 million for drainage along North Coast Highway 101, as well as $850,000 for hygieia, as well as some different H-SIP signals across the city as well. So again, tonight before you is the approval of a Legislative Federal Services Consulting Agreement with Carpe and Clay, Inc., for a period of three years with two additional one-year terms.
Thank you. Public speaker?
The speaker is Karen Kayden, but I don't see Karen here. She was here. Did they leave? Okay.
Nope.
And since there aren't other public speakers, I'll jump in. I really wanted to pull this item to daylight the amount of money that we're getting in through this consultant at, at the cost of $60,000 a year. As Assistant City Manager Campbell reported, it's a total of $36,325, of which $28,165 is to the benefit of sand on our beaches. So that's really good news, I want to point that out. The rest of the money is, well, $4 million of it went to the drainage in the Lucadia area to improve drainage, as we're improving the drainage along the streetscape in Lucadia. So I wanted to call that out, but I also wanted to call out the fact that there's not a whole lot more that this consultant is able to bring in. It actually ends up being about 1.2 million a year, which, which I'm not going to criticize too, too much, because it is good money, and I'm happy to have it. But the full scope of work under this contract is for the consultant to look really quite broadly at money where we can bring it in from the federal government and sometimes connect with state money for a full range of types of projects, including rail corridor, quiet zones, under crossings, acquisition of open space, restoration of wildlife habitat bluffs and lagoons, affordable housing, and other really important strategies that the city wants to move forward on. And so I'd just like to be on the public record of asking Assistant City Manager and our leadership here at the city to make sure we get documentation from this consultant under this contract that demonstrates that they're also looking for other sources of money, because we'd like to leverage this consultant and their work and their expertise and their skills and their relationships to bring back more money for other things here in our city.
Thank you, Councilmember Lines. And we do do a monthly meeting with our legislative consultant, and also she does send weekly emails that outline many grant opportunities that we then send out to staff, so we'll be sure that she's looking for that. Part of also, too, is that we send both of our consultants, we have a state and a federal, we send them our legislative program, in which they know some of the areas that council is very interested in supporting. We also send them the strategic plan, which has the focus areas of council as well as the goals, and one of them is to possibly acquire more open space and things like that. So just to let you know, these are all documents that we send to all of our consultants, and we keep them high on that level so that they know what the city really needs. So thank you for that comment.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yeah, and along that same line, on, on page 12, it is, is the scope of work for the consultant, and in it we list specific areas that we want the city's interest represented, such as rail corridor, coastal concerns, environmental concerns, housing. I noticed, and by the way, I think they've been doing this, and I just would like to add two more bullets to that point, and I think this dovetails with what Councilmember Lines was saying. I would add stormwater infrastructure, including but not limited to infrastructure rehabilitation, clean water, stormwater storage and reuse, and flooding reduction as another bullet, and I think that's a very specific one, very important to us. And then the, the second one I would add is open space acquisition and native landscape restoration, and I'll note that this is our federal lobbying, and so these are kind of big-ticket items, big things that we're looking at, but I would like to see that highlighted. And I know they're already doing it, because we got $4 million for the 16-inch pipe underneath 101, but I, I'd just like for completeness to have the scope of work in this, in this contract reflect those very, very important two additional things that I think they're already doing.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Aylers. Also, too, under our strategic plan, under our environmental health and leadership, it does talk about stormwater and wastewater reuse, and then under our goals, it also does talk about the habitat stewardship, but yes, we can then completely easily add those as well.
So unless there are comments, I'll make a motion with those two additions to the statement of work.
I'll second.
Well, so how about if we put in the stormwater and environmental concerns, because it has initiatives for water use and expanded use of local water resources?
I'm okay with that.
Stormwater facilities.
Yeah, yeah, and flooding.
Right.
Just to hit the bullet point that I hit with the items, if we divvy it up into environmental, I'll leave that.
And then that section.
I'm happy with staff to word that.
And then one more bullet point for open space or habitat? Habitat.
Habitat, yeah, open spaces, or it's already defined as habitat, but to broaden that definition, open space would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay. You have those changes?
Yeah, I will go ahead now, those as bullet points, and I am sure that our federal legislative consultant that we RFP'd and have chosen will be happy to do that.
Yeah, and they already are, so.
I think it's important to emphasize the point and get a report on how they're doing it. Thank you.
And while I am a big, you know, the Carpe and Clay do great work, I also want to acknowledge the tremendous effort that our representative in the House, Mike Levin, provides. He is, has had many successes, including the $4 million for the stormwater pipe. He certainly wished that he could have got the money that was necessary to complete the hygieia roundabout, but he was only able to obtain the $850,000 or whatever it was, but he is always looking for opportunities to help the city of Encinitas, and I appreciate it very much. So I think Bruce made a motion, or who moved that? Bruce?
I seconded.
And seconded, oh, there it is, right there, it says it right there.
And that motion does carry with Councilmember Hinzey absent, takes us to item 8G, and I do not see the speaker present, that was Dennis Kayden.
If there's no additional, additional comment from the speaker, from the speaker who pulled the item, I will move to approve this item.
I would second that.
Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Hinzey absent, takes us to item 8H, no, where are we? G8H, trying to keep track. And we do have speakers on that item.
Okay, this is a grant application. This is the approval to move forward with the application process, and it doesn't commit us to that, to the receiving of that monies. So if the Supreme Court comes back with something that would suggest we wouldn't need the money if we were awarded that grant, we'd still have an opportunity, so why don't we hear from public speakers?
We just have one, James O'Hara. We have no speakers on that item.
All right, I move approval of this item.
I'll second.
One moment, sire system is. And motion carries unanimously with Hinzey absent.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to item 10A. And this is a public hearing and consideration of adoption, of adopting Parks and Recreation user fee adjustments based on the Annual Average Consumer Price Index adjustments from 2023 for the San Diego region, and this is a public hearing, so we're going to hear a staff report, we're going to provide any disclosures that are necessary, we're going to have preliminary questions, we're going to open the public hearing, hear from the speakers, and then close the public hearing, and then we will have council discussion and action. So it's staff time. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. This is consideration of adopting Parks and Recreation user fee adjustments based on the Annual Average Consumer Price Index. Last year, the city council heard presentations and comments that led to the first full user fee adjustments for park and recreation since 1998, with the city council approving fee amendments at that time. In addition, the city council, as part of their fee amendments, directed city staff to return each year for the approval of the annual CPI adjustment before implementing, implementation on July 1 of each year. The consumer price index for the San Diego, it's called San Diego slash Carlsbad region, for the calendar year 2023 was 5.1%. In your agenda report, it shows 5%, that is rounded. The 5.1 is used to calculate the adjusted fees throughout. The full fee adjustment is part of tonight's agenda. I didn't throw all the different fees on, on the chart, and I can bring it up through each line if you'd like, but, and we can answer questions for that. We recommend that City Council adopt Resolution 2024-68 to adjust the park and recreation user fees by the CPI for 2023 of 5.1%. And we, we can answer any questions you may have.
All right, before we get to questions, let's go through the disclosures, please.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
And I have nothing to disclose. So any preliminary questions? Okay, I am opening the public hearing, so if we could hear from the members of the public.
Kevin Doyle?
Kevin Doyle, old Encinitas, and speaking on my own behalf, I'm going to urge you to, to not do this. We spent, we went 25 years without ever adjusting our Parks and Rec fees, and we finally came in and they're at a nice, neat number. We have $25 for one, $40 for the other. The CPI right now is running it at like 3.3%. We're probably going to raise our $150 fee by $8, $5. It's going to, it's a, it's $15,000, and it's going to take what was a solid body of work to come up with fixed fees that people will know and be able to share with their friends. Oh, you can rent a small space for $25 for a resident. Now it's $25.84 because it goes up. I don't think we should be doing this. We're basically baking in inflation into our system. It's never going to, it's always going to go up. I mean, inflation eases because people stop raising prices, and I'm going to propose that instead of baking in an automatic upgrade of the prices each year, that we instead postpone this and say, we will revisit this every one, three, or five years, certainly not as long as 25 years as we did last time, but I think this way will, we may come, 10 years from now, there may be a recession, and we may decide to lower some of these fees. Basically, they're on the backs of our users, of our residents here. Most of this money comes from our residents, and it's, it's going to bring in an extra 15 grand on our $135 million budget. It, I just think we should not do it, and instead, calendar an item where we come back in this in a year and revisit the rates, perhaps even three years. It's, we went 25 years the first time, and for what's approximately 400 grand in our overall budget is, I think it's just, it's cheap to try and hit an extra 3 and a, 3.5% from our users when they're renting these little spaces. So that's my recommendation, and that's my plea, and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Two and a half minutes.
And that concludes speakers on the item.
Closing the public hearing, we will now have our council discussion and action. Councilmember Aylers?
Oh, let's see. First of all, thank you, staff, for the explanation of the 5.1% that was already baked in there. I think it was important that we match our degree of accuracy or number, significant numbers of digits, so, so that process is, is the same going forward. And, and that kind of gets to the second point with Kevin. We went through the discussion, and we went way too long without increasing, and it became such a painful step up to get caught up, that that's why I, I supported, and I continue to support, the annual update, that, and it's based on the region's, what is it, average annual CPI increase for all, all items from the San Diego, Carlsbad metropolitan area as determined by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics during the calendar year. And I think that is a good system. It's, you know, it's, it's going to cause it to go up, I, I know, but the, the process that we talked about, when we talked about setting the CPI index, was to, to index it and to do it annually, and that is, that, that is a consistent process that we can all abide by. We just put it in place. I hate to now suddenly turn around and reverse that policy, so I'll be supporting it as written. And that's.
Councilmember Lines?
Yes, thank you. I think having given this a good deal of discussion and a lot of public input when we first put this policy in place last year, it feels very fresh in my mind as something that is, has been recently discussed and vetted very thoroughly, and really adjustments made to be. made to be sensitive to the cost to the public and to our, to our community. And that's a good thing, that's a good, good place to start, a good foundation. In order to not get in the situation we find ourselves in often, where we have not looked at what the costs to us are of continuing to provide these programs and then passing some of that cost on to the public, I think this is a prudent fiscal move forward. That doesn't, as our speaker said, doesn't really add that much, but on the other hand, it's not too much of a burden to the public either. And so I'll be also voting in support of this.
Deputy Mayor Blackwell.
Yeah, I just had a very quick question for staff. It does raise it in some cases to kind of an odd number, right? You know, we set them at really nice sort of logical numbers, and now it raises it a few dollars or a few cents here or there. Do you think that's going to cause, it's speculative question here, do you think that's going to cause confusion to the public, or they'll understand that rates will be adjusted annually?
Thank you for the question. We round to the solid number, so you're right, in a case that goes from 40, it may go to, 45 goes to 47. It definitely is part of the education process and registration of explaining that the fees are this amount for any given thing.
Okay. I do want to support what, you know, we did spend a lot of time on this last year, and we were so woefully behind, as my colleagues have noted. I think we do have to keep up with it. I'm hoping it's not going to be 5% every year. As inflation comes down, it should be much, much less. So yes, it'll lead to odd numbers, but if you can help with the education, I think we can, we can do this.
Okay, thank you. So I would move approval of this item.
I'll second.
Motion carries with Councilmember Hinsey absent. Takes us to item 10B.
What's that?
Did we?
10 is going to be after 8, after 10C.
Oh, after 10C. I thought you said 10B. Okay, thank you.
So we are going to provide policy direction for desired modifications to current outdoor dining permitting processes, specifically regarding design standards for safety and aesthetics of protective outdoor dining barriers, and consideration of a right-of-way usage fee for outdoor dining and public parking spaces. And our staff person is Senior Mobility Planner Jednack.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council and members of the public. I'm Evan Jednack, Senior Planner, here tonight to present item 10B on the outdoor dining permitting process. So for background, in October 2023, Assembly Bill 1217 extended temporary outdoor dining provisions until July 1st, 2026, or until a local permanent outdoor dining ordinance is adopted, whichever comes first. The city council initiated a permanent outdoor dining, outdoor dining ordinance in March 2022, and the first step is to prepare a coastal parking study. The parking study is nearing completion, and staff anticipates bringing it to city council for review in August. We currently have 27 outdoor dining establishments in the city, utilizing 95 total parking spaces, of which 59 are public right-of-way spaces and 36 are private spaces. On December 20th, 2023, the city council gave staff the following direction on the outdoor dining permitting processes. Extend the temporary outdoor dining pursuant to AB 1217. This has been done. Prepare a permanent outdoor dining ordinance. This is in progress. Require a leasing fee for the use of public parking spaces for outdoor dining, and develop barrier design standards that include safety and aesthetics. These two bolded items are the focus of tonight's presentation. Five, remove inactive or unpermitted outdoor dining establishments. This will be addressed after the items number three and four shown here are implemented. And the last three items will be addressed and clarified in the permanent ordinance. That includes to clarify, there is no limit on the number of outdoor dining establishments per block. We don't currently have a limit. Also, to increase the downtown parking time limit from two to three hours. And lastly, to require that converted parking is used exclusively for seating. Current city regulations require businesses to surround outdoor dining establishments with orange water-filled K-rail barriers. Planning staff met with risk management, traffic engineering, and public works staff to discuss potential alternatives to the current barriers. It was determined that any proposed alternative must provide the same level of safety against vehicular collision as the current barriers, which ruled out options such as steel bollards or planter boxes. One of the alternatives would be to install solid wood composite coverings that would encapsulate the existing barriers. However, this option proved to be cost prohibitive, as a cost estimate received for such a covering was around $3,000 per barrier, and some sketches are shown above in this slide here. Another option would be to install soft-shell vinyl fabric barrier coverings that would encapsulate the existing barriers. This option, while more cost-effective at approximately $200 per cover, could present issues with longevity and wear of the fabric. Such soft-shell vinyl covers are generally intended for temporary use or special events, and those are the pictures shown below here. So based on the financial and aesthetic limitations of the barrier covers discussed, staff suggests that the city council consider requiring replacement of the existing orange plastic barriers with painted concrete K-rail barriers at the expense of the applicant. Staff suggests that the new concrete K-rails could be painted a uniform neutral tone, to be determined by the city council, with an option to paint the barriers with an art installation or mural. Concrete barriers have an estimated cost of $500 to $600 for a 10-foot-long barrier, and that does not include installation or painting costs. Regarding a right-of-way usage fee, an analysis of nearby coastal cities found that several do charge a usage fee for outdoor dining and public parking spaces. In San Diego County, the city of Carlsbad charges $1.28, $1.28 per month, per square foot per month, and the city of San Diego charges $2.50 per square foot per month. And for additional reference, the city of Santa Monica charges $2.12 square feet per month, and the city of Long Beach charges $4.29 per square foot per month. And the city of Solana Beach is also in the process of developing a fee. As identified by the city's parking consultant, retail rental prices in Encinitas are most similar to San Diego beach neighborhoods, such as Pacific Beach, so the fee should be most similar to the city of San Diego's fee. Accordingly, staff recommends that the city council adopt a right-of-way usage fee of $2 per square foot per month to align with current market trends. This equates to approximately $4,080 annually for one standard-sized public parking space. So if each existing establishment were to continue with their current operational footprint, this would equate to approximately $240,000 in annual revenue. However, it is anticipated that some establishments will cease operations or reduce their footprint once the fee is implemented. So as noted here, the fee is proposed to take effect on August 1st. This is to provide time for staff to set up the framework for the fee and to give applicants time to consider whether to continue operations or to reduce their footprint. If applicants do wish to continue operations, staff will ensure that permits and insurance records are accurate and active. The barrier modification and changeout, if authorized, would occur sometime after the fee implementation and in coordination with the applicant, with Public Works and the traffic engineering departments. The barrier changeout may be delayed until after Labor Day, when it can be expected that street and sidewalk traffic will reduce from the summer volumes. And this concludes the staff presentation, and we are here for questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ayers.
Yeah, a question of clarification. First question is, can a business rent, they can only rent in front of their frontage, or can they rent neighbors' frontage, too?
At this time, there's, there's no regulation limiting it to their frontage, but that could be something that's addressed in the permanent ordinance.
Okay, as we go forward with the ordinance. And then the permit, as it's anticipated in the ordinance right now, I know today it's a temporary permit. Would it be a temporary permit in the future, or would it be, I think when, in my briefing, we talked about a flexible permit, or a simplified permit or something, but what's the nature of the permanence of the permit?
Councilmember Ayers, the expectation would be we'd have, we probably wouldn't call it a temporary permit anymore. It'd probably be, still be on a, on an annual basis, where we'd be, because partly because insurance is generally granted on a, in a year, year-long term. So we'd be looking at an annual basis, where we'd have some sort of outdoor dining right-of-way permit or some other name that will develop through that process, and we'd be reevaluating it every year, but it'd be something that if, as long as they up their insurance and were in compliance with the regulations we established, they could just renew by paying another year's lease fee.
Okay. And then as far as, right now, the example that you're sharing with us is with a K-rail type of barrier and temporary planters. Would the ordinance include a preclusion from anybody making, making permanent sidewalk or asphalt modifications? In other words, would, would the, Lisi have any rights to do anything drilled into the ground or any cuts in the concrete or anything like that? As we anticipate.
Yeah, the anticipation would be that that, they would all be sitting on the ground, and there wouldn't be any intrusion into the pavement. We want to be sure that when these installations go away, that the parking can be restored quickly and still be in good shape.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do we, do, we want to hear from the public speakers first, or do you want to?
I have at least one clarifying question, if it's all right, because I'm really anxious to hear what the public speakers have to say. But I was a little confused by page five, which you're on right now, so good. We have the concrete K-rails here, and we also have, on the left, we've got a photo of planters in between. That would be allowed for traffic reasons in Encinitas? I was under the impression it would have to be a solid face of K-rail, but if the planters are allowed, I would favor that. I just want to get your, your thoughts on what, what we're really talking about for the continuity of our decision on what that material is.
So Councilmember Ayers, the preference and what we're intending to follow up on of our, of Public Works and of our risk management folks is that we have a solid, a continuous barrier of K-rail, that there not be any separations between end-to-end with those K-rail. I think there's a possibility, when we get into the permanent ordinance look, that we could talk about the requirement for a planter box that would sit right behind that K-rail, and perhaps have the opportunity to provide that greenery between the street and the dining area, but, but to maintain that solid safety barrier.
Okay, thank you. That's a good clarification. I appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Blackwell.
Yes, I do have one clarifying question, then I'll come back on something else. On the, one of the very early slides, you recapped the meeting from December 2023, and I think you had something in there about the design standards applying to the barriers. And, and maybe you could go back to that slide, Evan? That'd be great. Because I think in the staff report, and what my recollection was, is there was going to be design standards for the permanent ordinance, not just related to barriers, but in general. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. So the upcoming permanent ordinance will have a full set of design standards for everything relating to outdoor dining, not just the barriers.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, let's hear from the public speakers, please.
We do have three, Raul Vilmar, Scott Campbell, followed by John Niederhofer.
I've been coming here for a long time, and it's going to be the same thing. I wasn't going to come in today. I didn't want to come in because I knew that, what the answer's going to be. What happens to all the street parking and also the sidewalk parking? Is the sidewalk parking going to be, also going to be on this list here? It seems like anything like that. I had customers, my customers come by all the time, and they walk through the, down 7-Eleven, I have one that's hand-dyed handicap, and he can't walk through these streets. Sidewalks are full, customers are, the waitresses, the waiters, and all that kind of stuff. Are they going to do anything for that, or are they just going to say, hey, you can have this, this, and that? What about the, like, some of the restaurants, they have here, but they also have more because the other people from the, from the other dress places said, oh yeah, you can borrow some of ours. Ms. Kim said that she, she thought there was be over. They're still in her area, her parking. Is she going to get paid from you folks for having hers, her, her area? No. I still have people coming and parking in my lot. I have no trespassing sign on there, and I still argue with people. They still want to argue with me. They still want to assault me. Now I'm, my other thing is, I sit there, and I have never smoked pot. I do now, because it's all, it's all, and all the smoke just comes in. They park in my lot, they go next door, their family goes next door. Where, where, where they're, they're sitting in the car, they're smoking pot. Where is the, their security? I worked security for 30 years for Malafua. We did all the high schools, we did everything like that, and all the bars downtown Carlsbad. We had security walking around the building. I send you a, an email showing you that they had the, the smoke pipe on one of the electric poles outside behind, behind the dispensary. I still have to look around. I go, and I go to the 7-Eleven, there's all these people buying, all the homeless buying drugs from, for the dip, for all the other people in the kits outside. I called, called ABC, and I called the police. They didn't do anything. What about all the security that's supposed to be outside? Who's taking care of the outside? We're still going the same thing. I, they told me I get, supposed to have my own security. Why should I do that? It's getting really bad. All these people are just parking. You have, the B-side restaurant is going to be coming up, you put in a two-story there. Is that going to include parking next time? Where's that going to come from? That's two-story. We, you know, I, I thought there would be more people here to, to, to tell you about the, the parkings and stuff like that on it. We still don't have anything, this, this thing here, up here, we charge, we get charged $8 a square foot for, for, for our rent.
Thank you, sir.
It does not look like it's $8 a square foot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sort again. Put it in the middle. Okay, good evening, council. My name is Scott Campbell. I live in Encinitas District 1, and I'm neutral on this mainly because, well, a couple of reasons, mainly because how can I pick a side if I don't know how decisions are made yet? Personally, you know, I've, I've presented on this quite a few times, and you've complained about the orange barriers. You know, they're faded now, and I actually think they're better-looking than any new proposed concrete. I can't believe that I'm saying that, but it's true. The contiguous restaurants are much more, much less offensive than the spaced-out ones. We've talked about that, too. You know, I ride by, and when they're all together, it's okay, but when there's a space and then another one, it's, it's tough. We talked about Pacific Beach, it was just mentioned, we're better than Pacific Beach. We should charge much more than them. No offense to Pacific Beach, but we should charge more. This is really about revenue, isn't it? This is about revenue, charging for the parking spots. And something that really hasn't been talked about is how much revenue are we getting from the restaurants as far as sales tax receipts? I believe we get 1% of the 7.75, and I sent some of this out, just some rough napkin numbers, and these numbers are probably horrible. Maybe some guys in the back could correct me. If a patio gets 50 people per day, and they average $20 in sale, I think those sales, those are very conservative numbers, it adds up to like $3,000 in sales tax per patio that the city gets. We're going to try to double that. That's less than what we're going to be charging them in rent for the, the parking. I just, I just want you to think about this in perspective. I really know how this works, but nobody's talked about this. Now, on this slideshow here, you know, on the left, you know, we've covered the public safety drainage and a bunch of stuff. We still need fees and permits. This is about temporary encroaching permit, which has a process. Next page, please. And I looked this up today, and this is on the permit application, and it says the seats have to be six feet apart, and I asked the managers to... you know, we've covered the public safety drainage and a bunch of stuff. We still need fees and permits. This is about temporary encroachment permit, which has a process. Next page, please. And I looked this up today, and this is on the permit application, and it says the seats have to be six feet apart, and I asked the managers to get the code inspectors to do all these things. This is still about COVID-19, and it's still in the application. Do these patios have more seats than they did before? That's a big question. There's talk about independent lighting. They have electrical cords. Some of them still have electrical cords taped to the sidewalk. How are these places even, why are we talking about parking if we can't get the basic permit? Next slide, next page, please. And then there's an inspection checklist. We're all over it for buildings. We just talked about electrical codes and stuff like that, and yet we allow these violations that were very easy to repair, to go by. Is it because they're making money versus people spending money? I just hope the council considers this stuff, and thank you much for the considerations.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Niederhofer, and thank you for serving our community. I am co-founder of Culture Brewing, and I first just want to thank you for moving quickly during COVID to allow outdoor dining, which saved our business and many others. But I realize it's not your job to stabilize our revenue stream. I do respect the opinions of other community members. I'm in favor of permanency of outdoor dining, but it's not because of the profitability considerations that superficially may appear. I've lived in a lot of places around the country, and it always confounds me that we have better weather and fewer outdoor dining options than most major metropolitan areas. And I like to see the progression further to outdoor dining. People love it. Outdoor dining allows us, since dogs seem to be taking over the world, they certainly are taking over my house, outdoor dining solves that problem. But I want to pivot to what I suspect are the core issues. I really think people have mostly figured out the parking issue, and in evidence of that, there's more foot traffic, there's more customer base, and there's less parking immediately in the 101 corridor that we're talking about. So it seems to be self-adjusting in a way that is, I think, and this is not data-driven, it seems to be safer than it was before from both a vehicle standpoint and pedestrian standpoint. So I think you've done a really good job of managing in that direction. I also think it knits our community together. When people are outdoors, it allows a respite while they continue to shop and pause in between at a restaurant or some sort of business. Our neighbors, who are not, you know, one's an optical place, they thank us regularly for the business lift that they get out of our patio, because people get to sit there and window shop for the 20 minutes that they're taking a pause and enjoying a half a pint. So I really think, and the pedestrians, the community, vacationers, they all just really seem to enjoy it. And it's not just our place. I do have questions about whether this is the best landing place on the aesthetic, all due respect. I just think there might be more process available from people who could advise us on the aesthetic, maybe get some public input on, because concrete barriers, I like the safety element. I really like it. Fees, of course, we should pay for having, for generating revenue on city property. It just, the converse makes me laugh, walking into the planning desk and saying, we'd like to build a structure on public land and not pay for it and generate revenue. It's just, it's silly, of course. It's a matter of what's fair.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes speakers.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the input. And on this item, we have two recommended actions. One is to provide direction to staff regarding safety and aesthetics of protective barriers, and the other is a question about the fees. And so I would like to take those separately, with the goal being a motion of some sort or another on each of the items. So with that, we will start with Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor Krantz. I really hone in on the aesthetic of this, so I'll start by addressing the aesthetic. I think that we have such a great opportunity to really improve the feel and the experience in the public realm. Our public realm is the street, and it's the sidewalk, and all the places where the public really wants to walk and slow down and shop and have a half a pint. I, I'm always looking for ways to try to repurpose parking cars in that very important space. So I'm, that very important space next to where people are walking and people want to sit. And so the more we can find other places to satisfy our parking needs, or reduce the number of cars that we bring around the city with us, the happier I am, because then we get to reclaim this important asphalt. And instead of it being just black asphalt, then we have the opportunity to really elevate the quality of the experience we have and stop for a while while we're walking around our downtown. So I've been anxious for this item to come back to us for consideration, because I think we know, and we have known for a while, that the orange K-rails are, were just a solution. They're not the best solution. I'd just like to ask staff, I know your duty here was to bring forward all the options that you thought were reasonable as far as what our next step should be to improve the aesthetics of this solution. And this is what you brought to us today. I understand the comment that's like, can't we do better aesthetically? But I know we've got traffic moving fast on one side, very close. And my knowledge of how you address that is something that looks kind of functional, like the concrete K-rail. But as far as your analysis of other solutions that are being used other places, were there any that maybe made the shortlist but didn't make it all the way to the presentation today? Is there a broader range of solutions that you came up with that, you know, maybe didn't make it to what you're recommending here today?
Councilmember Lyons, we were considered multiple options, such as bollards and other things that were less, you know, less intrusive. And really, there's really nothing else other than the standard traffic barriers that actually provide the safety that's needed. And in looking at other cities and looking at their safety considerations, really, the thought is that they're, they're really not taking their safety in the same seriousness as we're trying to here. We've actually had incidences where the orange barrier was bumped and it moved and hit things. So, you know, even with those large water-filled barriers, which are, you know, not as heavy as the concrete barriers, and will move a little easier, that we still had the possibility of damage. So when we see things like endcaps of a K-rail, or bollards with spaces in between them, or things like that, and we discussed this with our risk management folks in Public Works, we really don't see a good safety solution, other than a barrier like this or a permanent wall, which really wouldn't be palatable considering the possibility of a business changeover to a non-restaurant use.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that answer. I'm going to jump to something else and then loop back around later. I wanted to put forward what I sensed was a question from one of our public speakers, and that is about the parking. We clearly have not added a solution to the parking here in this presentation, but that's not something that's before us right now. Were you implying when we get the final parking study sometime, you're projecting maybe August, that's when we'll have that conversation about how do we meet the parking needs that are being repurposed in this way?
So I think that what we're, what we're looking at, and kind of what our preliminary look at the study is showing, but again, it's not complete, is that there's preliminary thinking that there is ample parking within a short walking distance of these areas, and that that's, you know, that that's not at capacity throughout the day. That's kind of what we're preliminarily seeing. So we're not really thinking or looking at alternative parking spots. We're looking at the capacity in the area and ensuring that it is able to serve the uses that are there. And I think I'd point to a comment that we heard from one of the speakers that is also what I believe I've experienced, is that the streets are full. There's a lot of people milling about during the day and the evening. They are parking somewhere. And, you know, I think there are just parking a little further away, a little bit up, you know, Second Street or the Leonard Streets, et cetera. But that's kind of the preliminary, that's what we're seeing in the parking study, but we still do need to finalize that before we bring it to you.
Okay, I look forward to that. It sounds like it may just reveal how people are using our downtown area, which involves the numbers of people we need to park and where the spaces are. And we'll then make transparent how those numbers work together to meet our parking needs. And if there are any deficiencies, that would be the time for us to talk about that and have public comment on that. Even if, even if it doesn't define that there are deficiencies, that would be the time to talk about parking. And it's not today as far as our recommendation. So I did want to talk about the maintenance. One of our other speakers also mentioned maintenance. I would like to move forward with the recommendation today, after I hear from my colleagues, where we pay attention to what solution is going to be most easily maintained. I think for me, that means easily cleaned, where there won't be places where trash and debris would be caught up and not be able to be, you know, easily taken care of. We certainly have a lot of experience with how we clean our downtown areas with our Public Works Department and how they, they need to clean our public spaces. And so we have some thoughts on how that could best be done, but the burden of the maintenance and the cleanliness of the space will be on the owners of the businesses. So it really needs to be able to be cleaned by anyone who is using this and takes advantage of this. So it should be easily cleaned. What I see would be a good public asset, I wouldn't want to just say, well, let's just do something because it's only safe. So it's just the safe solution. What I'd like to see is a safe solution that also elevates the aesthetics of our downtown, so that we have the opportunity to give the businesses the opportunity to have murals painted on the concrete if it's, the direction is the concrete. I think concrete creates a really fine opportunity for murals, and we already have so many wonderful artists in town who are painting murals. And so as we make decisions about what we're going to do, I would like to encourage us to consider that the city can create an opportunity here to really advance the mural and the artist's integration in our community. So given that, I really don't mind the concrete K-rails that I see in this, in the example on page five. And I would, I would look also to the opportunity of softening that look on the inside. On the outside, it has to be shaped the way it is for car and pedestrian and people's safety. But on the inside, we could have the opportunity to build a planter so that, or something that softens visually what the inside of that K-rail looks like, and really makes it more like, look like a courtyard space for people to spend time. So those are my thoughts at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Blackwell.
Yeah, I'll tag on to those comments, and those are really great comments. Thank you, Councilmember Lyons. I did want to talk about the aesthetics. I did my own little research, right? Because when I saw those concrete barriers, I thought, ooh, they look really, really, I don't want to say, they're just really ugly. They're almost uglier than the orange ones. But I know they're sturdier. I know they're thinner, right? So that helps, too. I know we can possibly add planters on the inside. But I think when I did some research online, I came across some, and I think they were in Santa Monica, where they were painted with murals, and they were beautiful. And so I would like to see us first pick a better color in general, but then allow having murals done. I think that would allow the property to brand itself, too. It could be very consistent with the murals we have around town. And so I think that's a really good thing. The other comment I wanted to make was about the parking study that's coming forward. We're going to implement any fees. We haven't talked about those yet, but implement any fees August 1. The parking study, I assume, will come before sometime in August or beyond. But we don't anticipate everyone who has on-street dining or outdoor dining to continue, right? So we might have some parking spaces freed up from that, right? Is that the assumption?
We're anticipating that some of the folks who aren't using it all day or have a smaller space and perhaps haven't had much business in it may not choose to pay an annual fee. We're not sure, but that's, we're kind of anticipating that that will happen for at least a few of those sites.
We may not know the final number by the time the parking study comes, but it would be good to at least have some assumption in there so that we can see what we gain from that. And I think that's my only comment. I agree with the maintenance comments as well. So hopefully, we can either make sure that gets built in quickly through our public work staff, but also in a permanent ordinance that any, you know, any business that's not keeping up, we have some way of addressing it and through fines are revoking their permit.
So Councilmember Blackwell, if I could, on maintenance, it's something that as we move through this process of establishing the fee and changing out the barriers, we're also going to bring along our code enforcement folks and our maintenance checklist and make sure that everyone's up to date on that, which we do, we do on a, as regular basis as we can, and also in response to complaint at these points. And certainly, if any particular issues are of note, we'd encourage the council or the community to let us know about those, and we'll get out there and take care of them.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ayers.
Yeah, so we discussed that we're just talking about safety and aesthetics. I'll limit my discussion to that. I want to, if you can go back, Evan, and pull up, I think it was sheet five or six, the one with, I think, the Santa Monica, that, perfect. I want to go back to, what's our vision here? This is the permanent ordinance, and I asked previously whether this was temporary or permanent. And I think the idea tonight is to have a permanent solution, and what we're looking to do long-term. And just to clarify, the example's down here, and I believe it's from Santa Monica. My daughter lives up in the Ocean Crest area, Santa Monica. I've eaten at these places, very familiar with what it looks like. And in particular, the K-rails, I think you're saying would be continuous, because you always want K-rails linked, because they may, the safety goes up incredibly when you link the weight of two or three or four or 10, right? Is that true? So this is not actually an accurate depiction, or at least that we'd be doing something safer, because we'd have a continuous K-rail with paint or whatever it would be on it, correct? Yeah. So the question I have is, I always like to look at things 50 years out, and where are we going to be? And do I want to have Encinitas look like this 50 years from now? Is this my permanent solution? And the answer for me is no. If the answer is I want it to be permanent, then I want to allow some sort of improvement, concrete improvement. Why? Because it would eliminate the little crevices and the spaces underneath the wood platforms, where the rats and the garbage and the food can fall, and it's hard to clean. And I think Scott Campbell came up here many a time over the last year, year and a half, and showed us, showed us the problems that are occurring now. Now, if you can go to the other one, as far as the aesthetics, and, you know, the cost trade-off, right? We could turn them all into planters, which would be great, but they're also hard to clean, and they cost too much, as this says. So that takes us to the cheapest and lowest common denominator. And, you know, I look at that, and there's an old saying in the Midwest, if you put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. And that's what I see in that bottom, bottom photo. It's not what I would go for as a permanent solution. I would like to see us work out a longer-term lease, where if a property owner, if we're going down this path, again, we're talking aesthetics tonight, I'm not for this, but I'm for longer-term leases, if we're going to do this. And let's make it fit into streetscape. We spent $6 million or so in downtown 101 Streetscape 20 years ago, and I don't want to leave it with this permanent lipstick. I would rather go and have the full facelift, or whatever you want to call it. So that's it. So I asked earlier about permanent versus temporary, and I asked about modifications to the asphalt and modifications, and I did it in preparation for this. But let's talk about lights. Right now, we do have some examples of taped-down, and that's illegal, and should be, somebody should be out there tomorrow making those be removed. And when I had my briefing, the answer came back, well, you have to put overhead. The only allowable alternative is to have overhead. So we're going to have some overhead wires out here to light the lights, and that's part of the aesthetics we're going to be looking at. And then the last item I come to is heat. And here we are, we just passed a gas ban ordinance. We just had the second reading tonight. And when you walk up and down there, all I see are outdoor propane- And when you walk up and down there, all I see are outdoor propane heaters. So we are putting a policy in place, we're about to write an ordinance, and I, I don't want to make it permanent, that we are encouraging more gas appliances. I would rather see that we allow under longer-term leases, that if we're going to do this, that we allow longer-term leases where you can have electrical heaters out there that can be cleanly powered, and that's the vision for 50 years from now. So I think we're on this half-path that's going halfway in between permanent and temporary, and it's really not getting me where I think the aesthetics should be for the City of Encinitas. So.
Okay, thank you. I think that, for me, the only option that we've been presented with is the concrete K rails. I personally have become a big fan of mosaic art. Drumright has, has converted me to be a strong advocate for that. K rails would allow for that artwork. Concrete K rail. Painting is certainly an option. There's a, a wide variety of options there. I think the picture of the K rail with the holes in it, there are ways to, to make that aesthetically better. So if you flip to the other slide, you know, those holes can be filled, there's, there's a lot of things that can be done. I did want to clarify, we're not going to allow trees in between the K rails?
The intent would be that they would be completely touching surrounding.
Okay, I'm okay with that. The question that I have is, there are several restaurants that have built decks, and so they have their own interior look and feel, and the purpose of these K rails then is strictly for the barrier that it provides between the dining patrons and vehicles. And so we're not going to get involved in what they have on the inside if they have a deck, I assume, right? So, but there are also restaurants that use the pavement for their dining, and we would expect them to have some aesthetics consideration for what's on the inside of those dining areas?
Mayor Krantz, I think at this point, we'd be just looking at the, the K rail safety barriers and the aesthetics related to those. The permanent ordinance, we did intend to look at potential requirements or at least options for how the decking needs to appear, and we'd give consideration, of course, to the more quality decking and posts and stuff that we're seeing now in, in terms of creating those options so to, so as not to create burdens on folks who already have stuff, but probably would head towards proposing requirements for folks who have nothing to have something that's with, from a selection of aesthetic options.
Well, I appreciate Councilmember Raylors' comments, but I don't have the same problem with, you know, the incremental approach here. Permanent K rail is okay with me. The orange, I think, sucks, and so we do want to move on from that. The notion of creating parklets as part of a permanent streetscape is not something that I would rule out, and I do expect that at some point there will be council that considers permanent changes to include parklets that would be the 50-year plan. But I think for the benefit of the community in terms of not, you know, taking this incrementally, getting past the orange barricades, go to the K rails and have them beautified, and then we can, we can, you know, I'm sure there will be future councils that'll circle back and assess this five years, 10 years, whatever the case may be. If, if people are tired of looking at K rails, then maybe they will take out pavement and build parklets that are permanent, that are level, that, that don't have the, the impacts that we have with the decks and other things. So with that, I would move that we approve the direction to make concrete K rail the barriers in the future and to require plans for making them aesthetically more pleasing, whether it's with a, a paint that we find acceptable, or artwork, or mosaic, whatever the case may be. So do you need more direction than that in the motion?
I think that's sufficient. Yeah, we, we are looking at heading down this, you know, they'd probably go in place. My guess is, is we'll probably end up looking at a time after Labor Day to change out the, the barriers. And I think, I think if council wanted to provide some direction, if, you know, if we had an acceptable neutral tone that they'd like to see those K rails, you know, if they are not painted with a mural, we could appreciate that direction. However, if, if you'd rather, we would come back, say, sometime in August with a couple of suggestions, we could also do that.
I think having a suggestion, a palette, you know, would be good. Earth tones is, I think, the direction that I would head, but, you know, maybe there are others that have more artistic skills that would have different opinions. Councilmember Lyons.
I, I actually didn't hear what you said. What kind of tones? I actually didn't.
Earth.
Earth, okay, thank you. Earth tones. Okay, thank you. That's why I was laughing. Yeah, neutral tones, I think, like earth tones, I think, are a good direction to give you. Also, if, when you come back, could you consider things like the end treatments on the K rails? And there may be products that are, there may be K rail products that are intended to be end treatments, and so they have less of a raw end. If, as Mayor Krantz said, that the holes can be filled, I believe that's true too. But I also think there's end treatments to them so that when you are driving along the street and you're looking at the end of them, it's not a raw end. I hope that makes sense. So if that's a motion, I'll second it. Yeah. And then, excuse me while I look at something here. And then I'll wait to make some comments about the second recommended action.
So the motion that I have, just to be clear, is to approve the use of the concrete K rail and require plans to make the K rail more aesthetically pleasing, such as paint, murals, mosaic. And then, did you want to include direction to staff to bring back information on neutral?
Color, color palettes.
And bring back info on neutral color palettes and end treatments for consideration. A motion carries with Councilmember Ayler's voting no and Councilmember Hensy absent.
Okay, thank you. So on to item two, which has to do with the adoption of fees. I would say that, you know, while the revenue is obviously nice, that's not the, the main point here. These encroachments into public space, I think, call for, you know, the users of that public space, the beneficiaries of that public space to pay for the public space. So it's much more about that. And, you know, the, the other issue that I, I have that we didn't talk about last time, but in conversations with some folks, I realize that our conversation regarding fees has focused exclusively on those direct encroachments into parking spaces and for those restaurants who have been given a pass to turn their private parking lots into dining space, there is an indirect impact on public parking that I think that it would be good to try and capture, you know, those impacts in a similar way. So I know it isn't a part of what we gave you direction to do, so if we need to come back with that at a future date, I would suggest that council give that direction. But for now, my thinking on the fees is that the staff recommendation of $2 per square foot is good. The only difference that I would make, the only shift, diff, the only substitute I would make is that the city would provide the K rails and take responsibility for the K rails. So it wouldn't be something that was purchased by the, the restaurant owners. Councilmember Raylors.
I like that idea. I, I like the city owning the K rails and since it's really our infrastructure. With that, if we're going to provide it, would you entertain going up to $3 a square foot? I think we're, we're, we're not equivalent to Pacific Beach. And the other thing, would you entertain a, since these are annual leases, could we index them, just like we did our park fees, to the CPI, just exactly the same way?
Well, I'm willing to listen to my colleagues. I, I didn't make a motion. I hear you saying you think it should be three. I think City of San Diego is at 250, I get, you know, just kind of looking at this. There were suggestions that we should do a Dutch auction and, and see what the market would bear, but I think for simplicity's sake, we should come up with a number and, and go from there.
And I was thinking where we're providing the, the K rail was an added value to, that they wouldn't have to invest in.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then potentially some future council could also look at, maybe there's some, I like owning that because one of the things I was going to suggest as a future option was maybe there was a standard treatment we would apply to all of the K rails. And, and by owning the K rails in the first place continuously, then we will control the treatment of them, whether it could be enshrouding them in higher, higher quality lipstick, or, or, you know, some other, some other face mask or whatever it might be. We, we could ultimately make it look even better and maybe make it fit in better with the downtown streetscape aesthetic treatment.
Deputy Mayor Blackwell.
Yeah, I was going to propose going a little higher than $2, and if we had considered that, so that was a question for staff, but maybe talk about how you landed on $2, and then I'll come back with a recommendation after I listen to you.
So Councilmember Blackwell, what, what we did is, we basically just looked at what some of the other folks were charging and really just kind of estimated where we thought it would, it would land and have a reasonable fee that's commensurate with what other folks are doing, and, and really just as a starting point. But I, I think it's, you know, you, we do see, you can see there are Long Beaches at $4.29 per square foot. I think there are other places that are, you know, that, that aren't on this list that are certainly in excess of the $2 that we proposed tonight. So I think it's, you know, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to go towards a higher number.
When I was thinking about it, I, I see Carlsbad very low, San Diego at 250, and then, you know, even Santa Monica at 212. I, I thought it'd probably be okay to go to 250 and, and be consistent with City of San Diego. I don't want to scare off too many of the outdoor dining areas. I, you know, to the speaker's point when John talked about, we want to encourage it. So I'm trying to find that right balance, but, so maybe I wouldn't go to three, but I do like indexing it every year, and 250 felt right to me.
Okay. So you want to make that a motion?
Yeah, I would make that a motion to have the fees go into effect, I think you said August 1st, that we index a fee with the CPI every year, the regional CPI, similar to the park and rec fees, and that we start at 250 per square foot a month.
And K rail would be owned by the city?
And K rail would be owned by the city. I'll second that.
Seeing no other requests to speak, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, and I'm just going to repeat, that motion is, is adopting the Resolution 2024-64, but amended to increase the fee to $2.50 per square foot per month and to include a CPI yearly, index yearly. And then the second part of that is to provide direction to staff that the city will provide the K rails and maintain.
Sounds correct.
And that motion does carry unanimously with Councilmember Hensy absent.
Okay, thank you. And does anybody else, can, can, does, do my colleagues support having staff bring back an assessment of the indirect fees for indirect parking and what the legalities of that would be?
Yes, I do.
So do you understand what it is that I'm looking for? We've got several restaurants that are, have eliminated their own private property parking. Thank you.
And would you want to consider being downtown where, where private parking, they, they could easily get around, or in other words, eliminate, under the current rules with being within half-mile versus, say, Cardiff?
Yeah.
There's, at least got to consider that.
Yep.
So I do need to ask a question for clarification, clarification. It, does our parking study, I'm sorry, Carrie and Evan, does our parking study include, geographically, does it include Cardiff, or is it just the downtown Encinitas area?
It, it does extend into the Cardiff area and Lucadia as well.
One of the things I'd like to, maybe for us to consider, is that that parking study may reveal that we are, that we are adequately parked without additional concern for parking if you're saying generally, you're thinking that might be the way it goes. Given that, if that's the case in Cardiff as well, where we have the use that's on private property, would there be a need then for us to look at an assessment on the private use for outdoor dining?
Well, I'm all for looking at it. I, I don't think we need to decide anything tonight, but I think that the parking study is important. I think that the question is, we are, we've just imposed a fee on, on operators of restaurants that are encroaching into public parking, and we are otherwise allowing restaurateurs who have private parking to clear their parking lot for the use of their din, restaurant operations. And that when they clear that parking onto the public right-of-way, they're taking public parking. So, you know, and I'm, I'm not prejudging anything, I just wonder, is there a precedent? Is anybody else doing it? What are the impacts? I would not, you know, so I, I think that this is a, a conversation we need to have, and so we're directing staff to explore it.
And would that be associated with the parking study information at the same time?
Yeah, I think that's perfect, that they're studying Cardiff and Lucadia. It's happening in Lucadia, it's happening in Cardiff.
Okay.
The downtown situation's a little different, although, you know, Urban Seas got their back parking lot, which was private, and they're, they've converted that. So it's, it's happening in all the communities here along the coast, so.
Yep, that's fair. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to. 10C, which is request to provide, to approve plans and authorize advertisement of the Beacons Beach Parking Lot Reconstruction Project, CP 22A, and receive an update on Beacons Beach access. And it's Engineer Two Stryker.
Yes, good evening, council. I'm happy to present item 10C, the Beacons Beach Parking Lot Design Immunity, and just a general update and discussion on Beacons Beach access and future steps at the park. I'll say, so there are four recommended actions on the agenda. We can kind of group them into two main requests here. It's the recommended action, one is to have this presentation and have this discussion, and then two through four are the typical requests for design immunity when a project in CIP has been approved through discretionary review and is at that 100% phase.
Can I interrupt you just for a second? How many speakers do we have? Three. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll provide a brief background on the CIP efforts at Beacons Beach over the years. It's been a long and windy road to get here. We'll shift gears to current efforts ongoing from the various departments at the city over the last few years, and then we will discuss next steps. So the big push with a CIP project at Beacons Beach really started in 2001. State Parks provided grant funding for a quote-unquote stabilization device at Beacons. It would fund the design studies permitting and construction. We went through many years of design and alternative analysis, and ultimately that funding was withdrawn in 2010. There was inconsistencies with what the grant wanted to fund versus what was shown in the State Park General Plan. So State Parks pulled that money back. The city revived the project in 2013 with a focus more on sort of alternative The city revived the project in 2013 with a focus more on sort of alternative stabilization devices. The original was more a seawall type construction, so we looked at erodible berms, soil nails, other kinds of stabilization. In total, there were six alternatives, all of which focused on stabilizing the entire face of the bluff at Beacons. And unfortunately, all six of those alternatives, through discussions with the various resource agencies, it didn't quite meet that threshold where it was worthwhile to move forward with application and a full design. So staff shifted focus on a more narrowed-in stabilization and focusing more on the parking lot reconstruction and then some kind of staircase project. So in August of 2017, staff presented a few alternative concepts with the ultimate request at this time was the execution of a design contract with a consultant to get this concept through design and permitting. That August 30th meeting is where we presented what's shown on the screen here. This was the city-preferred alternative, and that ultimately went through. Fast forward to July of 2018, this is what was first shown at Planning Commission for a design review permit. There were several issues with this proposal at the time. It was a concrete stairwell. The profile was very high up from the hillside. And Planning Commission at the time also was unhappy with how it did not integrate the existing trail into this new stairwell. The trail is an icon of Beacons, and they felt there should be more consideration for that. So following that rejection at Planning Commission, staff held two public workshops. We presented two new stairwell designs as well as four parking alternatives. And out of all of that public input, we returned to Planning Commission in December of 2018 with this design here. The stairs were wooden construction, much lower profile. The trail was integrated into the stairwell landings, but ultimately, this proposal was also rejected in a three-to-two split decision at Planning Commission. At this time, the full project was kind of put on the shelf until further direction was provided to staff. And this is kind of a good shifting gear so that December 2018, now we can speak to what's been going on at Beacons over the last few years, ultimately ending with this parking lot reconstruction project that's ready for approval. So, starting first with the Parks Department. So the Parks operating budget includes weekly upkeep and maintenance of the existing trail, grooming, debris removal, trash services, replacing erosion control devices, things like that. They also have ongoing maintenance on a native vegetation restoration project, all included in the operating budget. And then it's really important to bring up the two recent landslide events, the one in 2022 and then the most recent one earlier this year. These were also captured in Parks operating budget. It involved a little bit more intensive repairs, reconstruction of the staircases that are out there, little bit more significant grading activities, resetting the wooden retaining structures that are out there, things of that nature. So those two events both led to several months where we had to close access. The other current effort ongoing is sand nourishment. This is a problem throughout the city, and Beacons is not immune to that challenge. There's three ongoing projects through the Coastal Zone Management Program. There's the Army Corps project that just completed recently. Todd Moreau in Coastal Zone Management, he's been going out to the various beaches that were outside of the limits of that project. I understand Beacons was not quite in the footprint of the project. We've been monitoring how has the sand been feathering out, and we're seeing movement both north, reaching Beacons, as well as the south limit is feathering more towards the south. And we anticipate that over the coming months, there's going to be more feathering and more sand will get to Beacons. Additionally, Sand Dag is working on their own sand nourishment project. This will be the third round of it. Lucadia State Beach is listed as one of the beaches where placement will occur. That project is in design and permitting right now. We're still several years out from seeing any pumps on the beach, but it's currently in the works. And then we always have the SCOOP program that's operating, so our Coastal Zone staff are included on grading permit applications throughout the city. And when there's a particular project that has a lot of cut in the grading activities, if that sand is compatible with beach placement, we can condition the placement of that material on beaches throughout the city. All right, so getting to the main event here, the parking lot reconstruction project. In June of 2001, 2021, CIP received funding from council to pursue just the parking lot component of that 2018 application that was rejected at Planning Commission, just the parking lot component. A year later, there was an informational item at council following that first more significant landslide where we provided an update to council. The project was approved at Planning Commission on May 4th of 2023, and there were two appeals that were filed after that decision, one to City Council, one to the Coastal Commission. Both of those appeals were rejected, upholding the Planning Commission decision. So the key point here, and what's really important, is that the state of this parking lot project is that we're both fully funded. We have funding allocated for construction, and we're fully entitled at this point. So all of our permits are in place, and we are on paper, ready to proceed. So if we do proceed tonight on the parking lot reconstruction, we can advertise for construction contracts right away. That'll be in June and bleed into July of this year. The notice of award, if we get a loan responsive bidder, will come in August. And then we will ensure that mobilization does not occur before Labor Day. We want to wait until Labor Day at the earliest to start, just so we're out of the summer months. And then project closeout and the notice of completion. We anticipate three or so months for construction activities at the longest, so by the end of the year, we should be out of there. So I'll leave it with those staff recommendations again. We're requesting to approve the design for the parking lot relocation. We have our designer here as well, and we've confirmed that the way that the design is shown before you, there, it does accommodate a future access project if we decide to move forward with any Phase II steps. And then if approved, again, we will make sure that construction begins after the summer months. And then we're looking forward to having this discussion and happy to answer any questions. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of points. You mentioned that the construction money was withdrawn in 2010. What really happened was that the council was allowed to move the money from this project to the Moonlight Beach reconstruction of the bathrooms and concession stands. So the state let the city continue to have the money as long as it was applied at their other state beach, which is Moonlight. So we had approved plans at the, the city had approved plans at the time, and so that money was repurposed. I don't remember how much it was, but it was over a million bucks, as I recall. And there was a lot of effort by Lucadians, myself included, to try and get the council to commit money in the budget to continue the efforts at Beacons, and it wasn't successful until I got on the council. So there's that. And then the other point, you say that the second set of stairs was rejected by the Planning Commission? And I think one of the former planning commissioners here could probably shed more light on it, but it was actually a technicality that caused that to be not approved or not even considered. So these technical issues sometimes can cause long-term impacts that with two closures of the access to that beach, the community definitely felt. So I see no requests to speak. Deputy Mayor Blackwell.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you, if that'd be okay. So as we move into construction, have we, or will we be consulting with geotechnical experts to make sure we're not going to have any impact on the bluff, you know, and cause another slide? I, you know, we've had two naturally during very rainy seasons, so it'd be very helpful to understand what we're doing to minimize or mitigate that risk.
Yes, we've been working with our consultant staff. There's very specific language in the project specifications, which is a part of the contract documents, regarding any activities occurring west of the, what we're calling the failure plane line. And yes, there are special conditions in there for the contractor that they need to abide by during construction to ensure they're not, you know, parking equipment too close to the bluff edge or bringing any sort of heavy, any heavy machinery.
Great, okay, thank you. And then there was a public comment that raised some interesting issues I hadn't thought about before. One was that there was an emergency vehicle zone in front of the trail switchback entrance, and that had been removed. And the question was, is it an oversight?
Yes, I saw that question as well. So the emergency vehicle location just shifted slightly. So, yeah, it's not right in front of the trail entrance there. It's a little bit more to the north now.
Okay, so it's still there, just, all right. And then the other, the same public comment noted that the northwest corner of the parking lot had the benches, and they are inside the estimated failure plane. I just want to understand if that's true, and if it was, you know, is there a plan to relocate those benches?
They are. And in fact, you can kind of see on this plan set here, there's this dashed line. It kind of lines up with the curb here. That is the failure plane line. But maybe our geotech can dive into the considerations with the sidewalk being.
So we're going to have bench-sized signs that say, sit at your own risk? Or what are we going to do?
No, Jim Knowlton. Jim Knowlton, I'm your geotechnical consultant with Geo Pacifica, and we've been your geotechnical consultant for the city for almost 29 years. So I've lived all of this Beacons fiasco for a long time. And that failure plane is an estimated top of the potential landslide for Beacons. We never expect it to go all the way up to that failure plane. The last two failures we've had have been down in the lower area. And a reactivation of the entire landslide is, although possible, is not going to happen. So it's a conservative estimate of the ultimate potential for that landslide.
So the benches should be okay where they are?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. I'll come back with some comments, but I'll yield to Councilmember Ayers now.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yeah, so I was on the Planning Commission. Jim was testifying to us. Kevin Doyle was also on the Planning Commission. And to go back to the July 2018 meeting, we had a very vigorous discussion about the imminent danger, whether or not it existed. The Planning Commission ultimately didn't agree it was imminent. It was geologically imminent, but as far as, you know, hour to hour, no, not imminent as far as danger. So we did find for a denial on that, or, let's see, I actually pulled up the minutes, and we denied the case back then because of the factors I said. And we also said the massing of the huge concrete stairway was much larger, just like you said. Follow on for the second one, the technicality that Mayor Krantz was talking about actually was that we thought it didn't change. In other words, it looked just as massive as it did previously, but instead of concrete, now it was wood. Didn't change, we had given direction. It was less than a year after the original denial, and we took the straightforward way out to say, hey, this is not substantially different, and so the denial stands, and we denied it that night. So that was that. So tonight, we're talking about just the parking lot portion. We thoroughly discussed the parking lot portion back in 2018, too. I support what this is doing. I remember distinctly, and Jim, you answered my questions, I was, I wanted to know, how do you know where that failure plane is? I mean, and I think I asked you, how accurately do you know where that is and why? And your answer, if we go back and look at the tape, I think was within one to two feet, which I thought was incredibly accurate, and your answer was good. You said, because we drilled through, and I want to say in three places along that slope, and saw actually with the drill core exactly where the failure plane. And the whole idea here is, we don't want cars parked over that failure plane. If we know it within a foot or two, that's why it's having to be brought back so that the cars are on the other side, and not further because you know it accurately. So that, back when we made the, had this deliberation, although we didn't go forward with the staircase design, I think a lot of us were in support of this. And I'm in support of this reworking of the parking lot because I believe it is prudent, and we don't want cars falling down the cliff in. And as I remember the geologic analysis, you were actually looking at the safety factor during a maximum likelihood seismic event. So this actually assumed that in order to get a failure up here, you would have to have some highly likely earthquake. And the, I always keep that in mind because as much as this is going to be a problem, I, you know, things will fall during any earthquake. I don't want cars falling, and so that's why I'm for this. But at the same time, that same earthquake event is going to cause rockfall a mile north, a mile south, and we have a lot of other higher probability problems of danger. So I want to be careful. I want to keep the cars off this fault line and behind this fault line, but I'm not sure that we have the imminent danger on the general trail down. And Jim, if you want to comment whether I recall correctly your analysis?
You recalled it correctly. The one thing is that we've seen in the last two years, and it hasn't happened for like 29 years, is the two failures that we've recently had. And those failures are not a result of the landslide, the whole landslide moving. It's a result of the wave action and the king tides basically taking away support of the Beacons landslide.
Yeah.
It's removed sand, it's saturated the landslide plane and caused it to move. And so we anticipate those kind of localized movements to happen if we just continue not to repair what we've tried to do is stabilize that landslide.
Yeah, and so it's not on tonight's agenda, but back then, the proposal was to put sand creed, erodible sandstone, sorry, in the south third of Beacons, not across the entire face, but I believe we showed a small erodible sandstone berm. And we're not, we're not making a decision about that tonight. But the proposal I heard earlier in here, and I totally support it, too, is to get sand there through whatever SCOOP or a future Sand Dag Beach, what was it called, Regional Beach Sand Project III? Yeah, that's the way to stabilize that. That's my preferred method to stabilize it, but understand that that may take years, several years.
That's a great solution to this problem. If we could get sand at the base of Beacons, at the toe of the slope, that would delay any potential movement on that.
Okay. Okay.
And I would point out that we have agendized this in a way to talk about the stairs, and I did that on purpose, so not to solve the problems or make any recommendations on, you know, how to fix the bluff or the toe, but it is agendized broadly so that we can have conversations about the stairs as well. But we are also here to provide approval on the design and advance the bidding process. So these are two distinctly different items, but they're both covered under the agenda. So Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you. Very good work giving the overview of this place over time. One of the things that I'd like to get your input on, just to be sure I'm looking at the drawings correctly, is the drainage. And every, anytime we put some hard surface right next to a very sensitive natural area, I worry for the unintended consequences of some drainage will concentrate in areas it never did before. From reading the construction documents, it looks like the, you're using an existing inlet, and it looks like perhaps the drainage is not changing at all, but I would like your interpretation of that.
That is accurate, with one caveat of the, a benefit of moving landward. We're actually reducing the hardscape surface, so we are utilizing that same inlet, but there will be less impervious area draining to that inlet after construction.
Oh, okay, good. What is the material, just to help me shortcut this, where the benches are sitting then? Is that a pervious material?
That will be concrete.
That's concrete, so that's impervious, and the asphalt's impervious?
Correct.
Okay. And altogether, it's a reduction in impervious?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that.
Can we hear from the public speakers, or, yeah, let's hear from the public speakers.
Do you have three? Jim Jaffe, Mitch Silverstein, followed by Darius Dager.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Jim Jaffe from the San Diego County Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. And I've been involved with this project all the way back to that 2001 grant. I think we were some of the folks that pointed out the inconsistency with the State Parks' general plan, and that's why we're here. We need to do something that is consistent with that plan, and this is a great step towards that. It's been a long row for everybody involved, and probably more pain than should have occurred. But I hope you'll approve this plan going forward. Our concern going forward is that these closures are not good for public beach access, and Surf Rider is dedicated to public beach access. And continued closures is not an acceptable solution, and I'm not sure that what we're doing here is going to resolve that. So any discussion that we can have going forward, if it is a staircase, as Mayor Kranz is discussing here, let's pursue that. If it's some other alternative, let's pursue that. But it shouldn't be anything that hardens the bluff, because that's the problem with consistency with the State Parks' general plan. So we'd urge you to approve it and stop, and do something to stop closing access off, because a lot of people surf that beach. You can watch surf line cameras and see how many people are down there when it's actually open, especially in these summer months, south swells, and in the winter swells, you know, and even people are going down there. So we would appreciate approving this and finding some longer-term solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Mitch Silverstein, also with Surf Rider Foundation, San Diego County. I do policy work for the chapter. I'm just here to really bolster up everything Jim just said. He's actually been, you know, our guy on this, volunteer, not a dollar made from it, just because he cares about our beaches, just like all our volunteers. But just really to agree with him and urge you to support this tonight. I think the city staff has really done a great job on this, pushing through with this parking lot reconstruction. Like Jim said, it's not going to solve all the problems that are leading to these beach closures. It's not going to fix the fact that it's an eroding bluff on an active landslide, but it's going to take some pressure off, and it's going to help protect it. And, you know, it sucks that we're going to lose some parking spaces. No one's happy about that. But again, it's an eroding bluff on an active landslide, and options are limited. And we don't, what we don't want at Surf Rider, and really hopefully speaking for the majority of beachgoers who understand the science, is we don't want to stabilize bluffs or build seawalls and do these things that it's scientifically proven are going to kill our beaches long term. So, you know, you don't kill a beach to save 11 parking spots. You do what you can and move with nature, not against nature, and that's what we're for. Again, so, yeah, we just hope you support this tonight. Staff has done a great job staying consistent with science and with the State Parks' general plan. And then we also urge you to look ahead towards how we can get a better and more permanent, you know, nothing's permanent in the world of bluffs and beaches, but a sustainable, and at least medium-term, hopefully, vertical access to Beacons Beach and alternative access. Yeah, it really, you know, no one's been happy about the bluff closures. You know, again, if it's a staircase like it was last time, that's wood. Maybe lower profile is the way to go. We can see what city staff can come up with, and I think we all learned from 2018 a lesson or two. And, you know, I guess the best advice I could give is just to get the community involved early on, right? Because that was a big issue in 2018. Yeah, I think that's it. And, you know, I understand that this probably hasn't been budgeted for this cycle, so I would urge you to look at budgeting it for the next cycle. Of course, if that tax measure passes, that's a, this is a great potential use of some of that funds, too. Thank you so much.
Just want to say cheers. Great work on what you've been doing, and keep it up, please. My name's Darius Dager. I've been surfing at Beacons and hanging around in that parking lot for over 50 years now, and I consider it to be a sacred kind of place, one of my, the most important places on the planet to me personally. So I care a lot about what happens there. The parking lot is precarious, and I agree with Surf Rider Foundation comments. Armoring the bluff is not wise, not really ethical or sensible for a bunch of reasons. So moving the parking spaces back seems necessary to me. It'll create more public space for benches as well and such, and more kind of public park kind of space. So I support the plan, and I hope you'll approve it. Am I sad about losing 11 parking spots? No, not really. I think that we've all in California been privileging cars and parking spaces for too long, and in my humble opinion, healthy locals should be getting to their surf spots by bike anyway. So those who are not local should be okay with perhaps parking a little distance away if the parking lot's full and walking up the hill, let's say they park on the highway or whatever. It occurred to me that, I mean, I am sympathetic, though, to disabled and elderly people getting access there, and even if they just want to hang around and, you know, and sit on the park benches, even if, you know, people are not able to walk down the trail. So it occurred to me that maybe there's a way to control some of the parking spots a little bit, like maybe you could designate a few spots for elderly and infirm people who do not have disabled status on a voluntary basis with a sign that says something like, please save this spot for those less young and healthy, and enforcement would just be by guilt, you know? And the other thing is perhaps maybe taking a few of them and designating them as pick-up and drop-off only, 10-minute max spots or something like that. That way, folks could drop off their kids and gear if they have to park somewhere else, like down on the highway. And then people could do their traditional surf checks technically, as surfers have been doing down through the decades, although everyone uses surf line anyway these days, so surf checks don't really have the meaning that they once did. And more space for bike racks, please. The more bike racks, the merrier. They fill up fast when the surf is good. I think that's great. That's a sign of progress, that more people are using bikes. A question, why not DG on the area underneath, oh, was that three minutes already? Why not DG under the area where the benches are and not concrete? Let me just say one last thing. I had a comment about the potential stairway, very briefly. Okay, let's do it ASAP. We should have done it way back in 2018, so let's fast-track that. It's been, it's been really hard not having access.
Thank you.
That concludes speakers.
Okay, that concludes speakers. Deputy Mayor Blackwell.
Yeah, I'm going to move to, move on supporting the parking lot, and I think that's two, three, and four of the suggested actions. So I did want to make a comment. I mean, I think the parking lot is really important for all the reasons we heard when we heard this item earlier. But I did want to talk about the staircase, and it was good to hear that the parking lot will allow for that phase two of access. You know, it's funny, as I talk to a lot of people, business owners and surfers and elderly people, as Darius talked about, they love Beacons. It's iconic. They love the switchback trail. But after two years, two consecutive years of slides and then closure for a prolonged period of time, there's a little softening to, if we could have both, that would be great, and I would support that. I think, you know, we can continue to maintain the trail as long as possible, but having an alternative would be ideal, and a staircase, and maybe one that's, you know, flush to the slope would be better. So I would like us to, as a council, to see what a project would look like from design to construction, what the cost of that would be, and I would love to have that as an agenda item in the future.
But can we take two, three, and four, and then we'll come back to...
Sure, that's fine.
And I'd like to make a separate motion for that.
Okay, sounds good.
Do you want to speak to two, three, and four, Councilmember Ayers?
To translate what two, three, and four is...
It's basically moving forward the parking lot on the suggested action page there.
Evan, sorry, wrong staff. Could you bring up the recommended action?
I'm in support of the move in the parking lot and two, three, and four.
So we're two, three, and four. We're going to vote on that.
Who made the motion? Who seconded?
It's Deputy Mayor Blackwell, and I second it.
Okay.
And motion carries on that with Deputy, with Councilmember Hinzey absent.
Okay, so now we're back to the issue of the staircase, and Deputy Mayor Blackwell, if you wanted to go back to making a motion?
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to have us come back and have staff give us a sense of what the design would need to be. I have a feeling it would be different now several years later, so I'd like us to take a look at that. It is time to just make sure we get long-term and safe access to the beach, which we don't have when it's closed due to slides. So I think that's my motion. If you need any more clarity, let me know.
I would ask that we give a little more refined direction, which would be to start from the design that was before the Planning Commission the second time. So Plan B for the stairs was much different than Plan A, and it was lower profile, it fit the slope better. It was distinctly different, and so that would be the place where I would ask that you start from. I recognize that the bluff might have changed, and there may be more different needs engineering-wise, given the slides that have taken place. So I do think that coming back with as much information as possible along those lines would be good. And then, most importantly, an estimate of the cost, so that we have that before us, both the cost of design redesign and the cost of construction.
And I would accept that in the motion.
And I will second that. Councilmember Ayers?
So, yeah, and I, first thing is, putting a stairway in on the south side of the, on what's considered the more stable side geologically, assumed we would put in, or, yeah, assumes we would put in an erodible berm at the bottom. So whatever we come back with, and I support going and analyzing this and re-agendizing it, it's great, but the design, at least as I recall, was still pretty high off the bluff, and really, it just basically had a treatment change. I'm concerned about the construction equipment and the amount of work and the net effect of armoring, much like Surf Rider talked about tonight, of putting, whether it's erodible or non-erodible berm down there at the bottom. That concerns me. But I'm more than happy to have that discussion. One of the modifications that I think came up during our deliberation discussion was, hey, we'd like to keep the, the lower part of the trail is not failing, and couldn't we find a way to minimize the amount of stairway down and take advantage in how it goes down to one side, cuts back to the south, cuts back to the north? If we could get the landing to the structure up off the beach, whether it had erodible sandstone or not, and then we could, we wouldn't have to build as much junk down in the water and whatnot. Second reason is that the majority of the movement was always occurring on the north half of the, and the failure, and I think we even saw that in this recent. And so really, what we're trying to bypass is the first zig and zag and not the last zig. So I would, I don't know if you want to add that, or we just take it as staff could take in that as a way to look at this. I know there are options. Would it cost reduce it to have zig and zag, but not the extra zig? I'm just trying to help it, but I'm open, and I think this is a great discussion to have.
And I think every, you know, we want to encourage as much creativity as you have. I think that the Plan B that was presented was to maintain the path. As somebody who cared for an elderly parent, you know, he could walk up and downstairs, but a path was just treacherous for him to navigate. So to me, it's important that, just like we have at Grandview, Stone Steps, D Street, Swamis, we have stairs. And so from top to bottom, a set of stairs. And I'm all for keeping the path open. I, when I was in junior high, I surfed, believe it or not. I surfed. And I surfed Beacons, and I came downstairs to get to the beach. So, you know, the folks that are swearing allegiance to the path, you know, they're newbies, as far as I'm concerned. There was stairs at one time. So my goal from this motion is to just get as much information as possible, you know, and to be able to provide the public with what it's going to take in order to build a, you know, as permanent as can be on a unstable bluff, a set of stairs that we will keep access open. Councilmember Lyons.
I'll just complement what people are saying by saying, reiterating that minimizing the visual structural part of the stairs while it has the strength and the integrity of having the concrete foundations into the ground. So ultimately, I think what I would like to capture is that it lays gently on the land, that visually, it's not stark or large. And I think that's really the lens that I'm hearing people talk about it through. Thank you.
True. Councilmember Ayers?
Yeah, I just wanted to fill in your comment about people saying that they can only get there using the stairs. Actually, and Kevin may remember this, too, the deliberation, sorry, the testimony I heard, we actually heard quite a few people say the exact opposite, that they were more comfortable taking their kids and their equipment down the smooth path. And I'm going to frame what was going on back then. Back then, it was, do we close the path and put in a stairway? That was really the majority of the discussion going on, and it was a question of imminent danger, not imminent danger, that, and there was a lot of talk about the upper portion of the bluff, where there's about a 15-foot on the, on the south end, or the north end, where there's a 15-foot escarpment of that failing and landing on it. And so the trade-offs going on were, hey, are we going to keep it open or keep it closed? And my favorite, favorite quote, Jim, I'm going to quote you again, when I said, well, why didn't you want to close the path? And you said, because I didn't want to get fired. And my response was, and you want me to get fired, right? You remember it? Yeah, okay. So that's, that's really key here, is I'm all for permanent and making it work, low profile, like what we're talking about here. I think we can come back with a better solution overall.
Yeah, and Plan B did have the path, and the city had committed to keeping the path open. And there are parents who won't let their kids use the path because of the perceived dangers. I have seen kids that, you know... I have seen kids that, you know, are happy to run up and down a path. They'll do it three times, and as long as it takes me to go down and up once. But with the elderly, it's that stability of one foot in front of the other, and it's a little uncertain. So I don't mean to beat a dead horse. We can, we can take this vote and move on. I regret the predicted, you know, we, we, everybody knew that we'd get to the point where we were losing access if we didn't put in stairs, and we have twice now. So I'm very interested in trying to keep access from being lost a third time. So with that, we will call the question.
Just want to make sure I have the motion correct. So it's direction to staff to bring back updated information, options for a stairway, using the second design to sub, submitted to the planning commission as a starting point, and to include cost estimates for design and construction.
Yes, please.
Right, that's your motion.
Correct.
Motion carries unanimously with Hensley absent. That takes us to item eight.
Okay, we do have a couple more things, but I'm afraid we're gonna have to take a nature break here. So I apologize, and thank you all for.
The next item is eight oh?
Eight oh, yeah, that's correct. Mm-hmm.
Turn all the.
We are moving on to item, we're circling back to item eight oh. And that is the potential funding opportunities for completing the stretch of stormwater pipe in the current construction segment of the streetscape. And it's our city engineer, Jill Bankston.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the public. I'm here to provide some information on exactly what the mayor just said, potential funding for Lucadia Streetscape North 101 Drainage, or any other project the council chooses to allocate money towards. So I'll give a little bit of background about the funding opportunities that have been established for fiscal year 2425. So through our budget workshops this year, we had $4.1 million available for capital projects or other work projects. And that 4.1 million came from unassigned fund balance. And then we went through and really closed or canceled any projects that were already completed, or weren't moving forward, the vast majority of those. So that's where that $4.1 million came from. Then in May, we recognized that we had about $1.67 million in unallocated mitigation fees available that could be allocated towards a project. So City Council approved an allocation of those fees into our Lucadia Streetscape project for the major drainage. But more recently, I was asked to provide some additional information about where might some other money be, and what other funds could possibly be reallocated from existing capital projects or other sources. So these are the active construction projects that we currently have. So all of these projects are fully funded. The ones at the very top that don't have parentheses are in construction currently. We have a couple that are in advertisement. We have a few that we're looking to award, or were awarded tonight. But most of these projects use grant funding, or some kind of restricted funding. So we don't have many opportunities to say, cancel a project and steal money from, you know, another project to free it up for another purpose. The, the three on the bottom are fully funded, and they are general fund projects, so those were, would be ones that, that could happen. However, they are all recently awarded, so I don't expect that will be the direction tonight. In addition to our construction projects, we have many active design phase projects. So these are ones where we're currently moving them towards completion of design and entitlements. Many of them, again, are grant-funded. There's a big chunk in the middle, Glen Park, Grandview Stairs, Beacons Beach Parking Lot, which was just approved design tonight. Citywide Ped Crossings, or not Citywide Ped Crossings, but those three are general fund-funded. So that would be another opportunity, if you're looking for additional funding. Citywide Ped Crossings, leading pedestrian intervals, those are also grant-funded. And then we have four projects at the bottom that are currently in design, that we still need to identify construction funding for. That's the North Lucadia Ped Crossings, our Citywide Quiet Zone, our Lake Drive Storm Drain, and our La Costa Ped Path. So then we have a few projects that have been stalled, and have a little bit of money sitting in them. So that was where we looked to see how we could free up some additional funding that could potentially fund additional major drainage on North 101, or could be used on another project at council's discretion. So we have a project called La Costa Avenue Improvements, and that is different from the La Costa Ped Path project. The La Costa Avenue Improvements project was established after a settlement with the City of Carlsbad, related to improving the level of service on La Costa Avenue. And it was predicated on a four-lane La Costa Avenue. The, the funding that is in there is traffic mitigation fees, and regional traffic congestion mitigation fees. And they can only be used for traffic, vehicular traffic mitigation, so things like roundabouts, traffic signals, or adding new lanes. So we have a little bit of money sitting there. We have just the tiniest little bit of money sitting in our Verde pedestrian crossing project. We're just about done. We have to get that project through the planning commission. And then we'll be, we'll continue to look for construction funding for that. Birmingham Drive Complete Streets has also a very small amount of money, about $30,000. And we're looking for construction funding for that, but the design is complete on that project. And then we have the Lucadia Boulevard Roundabout at Hygiea, and that has a mix of general funds, traffic mitigation fees, and gas tax. But again, we don't have enough funding to move that project forward at this time, so that funding has just been sitting on that project. So if you add up all of those numbers, that's a total of $3.256 million. We're recommending not bothering moving out the Verde or the Birmingham Drive funding. So that would be a total of $3.222 million available for reallocation, if City Council so chooses. So again, this is a little description of traffic mitigation fees, so they can't be used on every road. They can only be used on circulation element roads and traffic facilities. And like I mentioned, these are fees that we collect from private developments, where they're adding vehicular traffic. So you need to use them to mitigate for additional vehicular traffic, so it can't be used for bike or ped facilities. Similarly, our regional traffic congestion improvement program fees can only be used on regional arterial system roads. So that's a smaller subset than our circulation element roads. And the table to the right is from the Sandag Regional Plan, and that, those are our regional arterial system, or RAS roads. And you'll notice it doesn't include some of our, our roads that we consider are big connectors. So Birmingham is not on here, and Santa Fe is not on here. So funding from RTCIP mitigation fees can't be used on those roadways, just on the ones that are in this list here, that includes Coast Highway. So the Mitigation Fee Act requires annual reporting for each of the funds, so that we have an account of where the funding is coming from, and how we intend to spend it. If the mitigation fees are older than five years, there's some special reporting associated with that. So I always like to try and spend down all those fees within five years. We don't have those additional reporting requirements. So what we, what I like to do is assign those projects, or try to allocate those projects, or the funding, the mitigation fees, to projects that are going into construction, have enough money to go into construction, so that the, the fees that have been paid can be put to good use, and we can construct those improvements, rather than putting it on a project that doesn't have enough money to move forward. So we have three projects that could be a good fit, that staff could recommend for placing this 3.2 million of mitigation fees. That's the North 101 Drainage Improvements, and that would be to look to extend the 60-inch drainage pipe from Grandview down to Jupiter. We could also put it on the 2425 paving project, as long as it was on the circulation element or RAS roads, depending on the fees. Or the Lucadia Streetscape Segment C West, some of the additive alternates that we weren't able to fund. That includes the DG Trail, street furniture, and landscaping. Staff recommendation, however, is to put it on the North 101 Drainage, because engineering sees it as the biggest need, and paving can be funded in other years, as can the additive alternates on the Lucadia Streetscape project. So this is a little background on the drainage costs that we have on the North 101 Drainage Improvements. We've awarded 4.9 million when we awarded the original Streetscape construction project. We funded the additive alternate one, which went from Morgate to Grandview, through a combination of $1.8 million in the general fund in our 2425 annual budget, and then $1.6 million in unallocated mitigation fees that have since been allocated. So this final stretch of the North 101 Improvements would extend from Grandview to Jupiter. The cost is 3.3 million, and we've been able to find about 3.2 million. So the balance of that, we'd be looking to make up in either the contingency that's already in the project, and then be looking potentially at mid-year to backfill that contingency, so that we would remain whole. So these are some other projects that we wouldn't necessarily recommend for mitigation fees, but could be allocated towards these projects. And then I've included the reason why we're not recommending at this time. So we've heard a lot of talk about the Santa Fe Crest Roundabout, but we're not ready to go to construction on that one. We still need to design it. We need permitting. We've got right-of-way utility. We've got right-of-way utility issues, and we can't use the RTCIP funds on that. And then you'll see other projects that are good projects that we would like to move forward, but we just don't see that now is the right time to fund them. So with that, the staff recommendation is to return a little over 2 million from the Lucadia Boulevard Hygiea Roundabout, 1.2 million from the La Costa Avenue Improvements project, so that we can fund $3.2 million into the Lucadia Streetscape Segment C West project, adopt the resolution that would amend the budget, and then authorize an increase of 5.02 million to the Blue Pacific Construction Contract. And that would cover the 1.8 million that was added through the budget that was approved tonight, plus this $3.2 million up for consideration tonight. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have public speakers?
We have one.
One. I'd like to call on that public speaker.
Kevin Doyle.
Mr. Doyle.
Thought this would have come earlier, and there would be people here. But I just want to say, it's like, this is a no-brainer. It's infrastructure. The drainage under the ground is more important than than, God, how many years have you been waiting for that roundabout, Tony? We've got the one north of it, one east of it, one west of it, and that one in the middle just waiting, I think, 17 years, was it? Maybe a little longer?
More than that, yeah.
More than that? It's a but, yeah. So I don't really, I'm preaching to the choir here, but yeah, let's put pipes in the ground. It's this is, you know, we'll miss Lucadia, we'll miss its roundabout, but it will like its drainage more, and super exciting to get a 60-inch pipe all the way up to Jupiter. It's huge. It's huge. The Katie's gonna love you.
I would suggest a different phraseology. You say that this is more important than the roundabout. I would say it's a higher priority. I think the roundabout at Hygiea is just as important, but it's not a higher priority.
I accept your correction of the language. My dad was a big fan of like proper wording, and yes, it is a higher priority, but the roundabout is essential. They work well in pairs and in groups, and they work poorly with stop signs in between. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes speakers.
Okay, Councilmember Ayers.
Yeah, and I would go one step further on that wording. I would call it more urgent also, probably priority. And it's the urgency to me is that construction has been funded of the stuff on top. Let's get the pipe buried in the same stroke and save money both ways. So I support this. I really appreciate the thorough presentation of the alternatives, and I totally agree with the recommendation, right down to the the small difference being pulled temporarily out of the contingency that's in the project. And so really appreciate how open that was. For clarity, I'm going to repeat what I what I told the public and Tony in particular. I really appreciate this, giving up this temporarily, the funds for the roundabout, and now in the case of the other project. And I will support restoring those funds as soon as practical and feasible, but I think this is this is about time getting it done in a very timely fashion, and so I'm in support.
Thank you. Councilmember Lyons.
Excuse me, Jill. I'd like to get clarification on what we have budgeted Lucadia Hygiea Roundabout. To me, I'm seeing on the Infrastructure Task Force spreadsheet, it looks like it's 5.4 million. Does that sound right?
That's, yeah, that's about right, yes. I think we updated that number a little bit with the donut chart that went forward.
I was looking there too, and.
Let me check my binder, hold on.
I have an unfunded estimate on it on it as 1.55 million. That would be the unfunded estimate, assuming it keeps the money it has now.
Yeah, that sounds that sounds about right.
That sounds right, yeah. Let me double-check here. I'm doing math quickly. So that's somewhere north of 5 million, I think. And La Costa, the total amount we would need to fund the need for that project, do you have that number off the top of your head? I really couldn't find it in just one place on the Infrastructure Task Force.
We're not quite done with design. We're almost there yet, so we don't have a complete and final cost estimate for the La Costa Ped Path, but it will be, I don't know, somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, 700,000, 800,000, somewhere in that neck of the woods.
Oh, okay, then it may be here. I'm sorry, then, I did see that at 700,000, identified as item 13. Yeah, on the Infrastructure Task Force, so that would be the right one. So with so with the La Costa Ped Path, and it's not that we don't have enough money, it's that we're not done with the design?
We're not done with the design, and it wasn't chosen for construction funding this year. We don't have a cost estimate, so that could be something that would be considered with next year's budget as well.
But that's relevant in that we don't have the design, so I'm just reiterating it. The timing isn't right to say we're gonna.
Yeah, there's some utilities out there on on La Costa, some telephone poles at the intersections that are gonna take a little bit of time to move as well. So I think we've got a little bit of time on that one.
So I would like to say that I feel like this is a situation where you're trying to choose between your children, because these projects are all warranted, they're all important, they're all needed in the community for many reasons. The timing is important for the drainage along the Lucadia Streetscape project. I'm compelled by that. I would I would like to present that I would be supportive of moving this money only if we also include a desire to elevate the La Costa Ped Path and the Lucadia Boulevard Hygiea Roundabout to higher on our priority list for funding when we have the next round of money available for funding. Right now, La Costa Ped Path is number 13 on the Infrastructure Task Force list, and Hygiea Roundabout is number 43. I think it would be because we are stripping the money from it and because them and because they are so important to this section of our community, it seems like a fair trade-off to say that we've taken a step back, but what we're gonna do in exchange is to take a step forward and elevate the importance of these projects for funding in our in our list of, probably it would be then on the donut list if I'm understanding correctly. So I just want to put that out there as where I stand.
Deputy Mayor Blackwell.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. I wanted to talk about this grant we got for the Hygiea Roundabout. So we got $850,000 federal grant, and you and I had a little bit of email exchange, so I thought maybe that'd be good to put out here, and so we can talk about it. Because there's really two phases. You could think about the Hygiea Roundabout. There's obviously the roundabout, which is a big part of it, but there's this sidewalk that we have no sidewalk that's on the south side, just east of the roundabout. And it's it's kind of strange. We just don't have any there. It's just missing, right? And you were gonna pursue whether we could use that federal grant money rather than lose it towards at least even covering the sidewalk, which is around the same amount of money, I think. And right now, could you explain, Jill, what you've learned so far?
Yeah, I've reached out to Congressman Levin's office, and I spoke to one of his staff members about our desire to potentially move forward with the roundabout project in phases, with the Ped Path being the first phase. And just for background, we had asked for 4.8 million for the roundabout, and we got 850. So they understand that we don't have enough to build the whole project.
I think you mean we got .8?
Yeah, we got 800,000. What did I say, 800 million?
No, you said eight. We asked for 4.8, and we got eight. You mean .8.
.8.
Yes, correct. So the staffer I spoke with in Congressman Levin's office was supportive, however, he said that that will be a federal grant through the department, the U.S. Department of Transportation that's administered by Caltrans. So it's really Caltrans buy-off that you need. So I've reached out to Caltrans to initiate that conversation. I have not connected with the person I need to connect with on that yet, but we're certainly pursuing that to see if we can move forward with just the pedestrian improvements with that grant.
Great. I mean, going back to moving this money for the drainage improvements, it is a no-brainer. I think Kevin Doyle said that. It's urgent. We can do it through a change order. We can get it done. So I definitely would support that, and if we don't have a motion, I would move to do that. I think the two maybe additional things I'd like to say is continue to pursue with Caltrans if we can use that grant for what I would call maybe the sidewalk phase of the total roundabout project. And then also, Councilmember Lyons brought up La Costa. I mean, we couldn't use those fees that we collected from that lawsuit with Carlsbad, and we couldn't just transfer them to the Ped Path, but we know we have so much development coming along that corridor, and, you know, to accelerate or make a higher priority, the Ped Path, is really, really important. And I'd like to figure out, not just wait for the next budget cycle, we have a couple opportunities, right? When this year's budget closes and we know where we land, there may be some available funds at mid-year for the next year's budget. So I'd just like us to keep that in mind as we're going through those different junctures and see if we can fund it faster. And that's it.
Thank you. I appreciate the efforts, and I think this is a good solution that's painful, albeit And so it is with great relief that you brought this. We, long ago, started on the process of putting together the engineering and design of this pipe. It's been a long process to get that to the point where we're actually digging right now and putting pipe in the ground, believe it or not. You bid the Streetscape project with the additive alternatives to extend, and at that time, I said, come hell or high water, I'm gonna figure out a way to come up with the money to build that whole length of pipe, and we're on the precipice of being able to do that. So I'm very pleased with that. This is a very challenging job for me because I'm an impatient man, and it's been many years of dealing with trying to advance this stuff. So it feels pretty good. I get very excited every time I see that that machine take another scoop of dirt out of the ground and put a pipe in. So very excited about this. Appreciate the compliment from Councilmember Ayers, and I will remind him that he promised to make the Hygiea Roundabout a priority. So Councilmember Lyons' comments are, I think we have the support of the full council to prioritize the roundabout at Hygiea as well as the La Costa Avenue improvements, and I commit to that. With that, Councilmember Ayers, you would like to speak.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. I'm think I'm sensing just a little bit of maybe, or I'm confused maybe, the money we're pulling is not from the Ped Path, which is, I believe, Project CS24C. We're pulling, I think what the proposal in front of us tonight is to pull the funding from, and it's named similarly, La Costa Avenue Improvements, which is Project CS11C. So right now, we're not changing any money. I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page there, so.
That's correct.
But and so then I guess I would ask, Joy, were you asking to also move up the Ped Path, which actually I support too, because the mayor and I walk that, and it is, while we were walking, I've said this before, how many groups did we see walking in the street, not even on the overgrown grass, but they were out in the street and in the bike lane and abreast?
Yeah, absolutely.
So so you're saying raise the Hygiea Roundabout and the La Costa Avenue Improvement, CS11C, and the Ped Path also? That's a question.
Ah, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think CS11C is one of those projects that is currently pending the conversation about the new circulation element so that we can identify just exactly what improvements would comply with the law related to the circulation element. But the pedestrian path doesn't, and I appreciate you making the distinction between the two, but many people interpreted that to mean that the Ped Path was gonna go get zeroed out.
That's what I was concerned about. I want to make sure that's not.
And you know, and I think that's the thing that deserves the priority. I was here when the plans to put the pedestrian facilities on the street, Elena Thompson was here, this was probably probably 2014 or 15, so, and it was just gonna be an interim solution, but that's, you know, the way interim works around here, and it's it's time to prioritize that. I frankly, you know, that's the reason why I think that the sales tax measure is critical that we get passed, but that's another agenda item for discussion. So we do have a motion by Deputy Mayor Blackwell, and I second it to for staff recommendation here.
And then just to clarify, the staff recommendation, so like item number one, it will end after appropriate to the Lucadia Streetscape Segment C West Project, CS23D, period. And the same for number two. And then for number three, it will end after Pacific Engineering and Construction from 21,921,870 to 26,944, 684, period. Correct?
Yes, just as it is it spelled out there.
Yeah, we're just taking out a few ones that said, or other projects, as directed, because you're directing it to go to.
Oh, yeah, take out the or other project.
Yep, that's correct.
And one last thing, I know I'm not an engineer, but I stayed at Holiday Inn Express last night, and so I was thinking about the Phoebe Pump Station, and I'm hoping that you've made provisions to direct that water to the new pipe at Jupiter so that we offload that water from the 24-inch pipe.
I know we've talked about this a bunch. I'll get back to you on that one.
Okay. And, you know, while you're thinking about it, maybe an underground pump at the roadside park with another 3,000 feet of that forced main that would go to the 64-inch, that could, you know, be very helpful in big storms because we, as you showed up there, Segment B is not funded, and, you know, depending on what happens in November, it may be a long time. So something to think about. I have no idea what that would cost, but while you're kicking these ideas around, maybe you could. Okay, thank you to everyone that stayed for that, and we are now on to back into our order, which is 10D, Consideration Resolutions Calling a General Municipal Election and Requesting the County Board of Supervisors to Consolidate the City's General Municipal Election and the Statewide General Election.
Correct. And the items before you, the two resolutions, are the resolutions necessary to conduct the November 5th election? And so the first one is authorizing the conduct of the election. That includes electing the mayor, District 1 and District 2 councilmember seats, and then the sales tax ballot measure that was added. And then it also sets the direct and rebuttal argument deadlines. And then the second resolution is requesting the County Board of Supervisors to consolidate the election.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public speakers?
We do not.
All right, I would move approval of this item.
I'll second.
Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties. Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Hensy absent.
All right, on to 10E, which is a Discussion of Signatures on the Sales Tax Ballot Measure Argument and Rebuttal. And with Councilmember Hensy absent, I am the contact person on this. When we last had this discussion, it was, we had myself and Councilmember Hensy and Councilmember Lyons signing the statement in support of the sales tax measure, and then me and Deputy Mayor Blackwell for the rebuttal. And I would, after a meeting of the subcommittee and discussing it, we would prefer to split up the statement in support to have just two of us on that, and then the two other supporters of the measure be on the rebuttal. So that is the main purpose of this. There will be then two councilmembers, a mayor and a councilmember, on. There will be then two council members, a mayor and a council member on the statement in support, and two council members, a, a council member and a deputy mayor on the rebuttal. And then that will leave three spots, and we're looking at a variety of people. But, uh, um, that's how we would like to, um, rearrange what we decided at the last meeting. And out of an abundance of caution, instead of just, uh, making those arrangements, we brought this item as an, as a public discussion. So Councilmember Lyons.
Yes, thank you. I'll move approval of this item. What it looks like it's achieving is providing the subcommittee with the flexibility they need to make good decisions. And so I'm in support of that.
Okay, I'll second that.
Do you have a speaker?
Okay, we'll hear the speaker.
James O'Hara.
I should have asked that question before, so we're already got a motion on the table.
To clarify on that, when you say, um, council member on the rebuttal side, um, it's, uh, Councilman Ayers and Councilwoman Blackwell?
No, it's, uh, Councilmember Lyons and Council, Deputy Mayor Blackwell on the rebuttal. And, uh, myself and, uh, Councilmember Hinzey on the, uh, statement in support.
Mayor, I, I think what you're asking, it's the rebuttal to the argument against. So, yeah, it's, it's the same side of the, of the measure.
Yes.
Right.
So, so at the last meeting, there was, I don't know if you can hear me, sorry. At the last meeting, there was a discussion about having funds allocated for the, the side that is not, is against proposing the sales tax. Was that included in the final?
No.
Councilman Ayers spoke up, he said, uh, we'd like to dedicate the same amount of resources to the con as we are the four, and.
No, there are no resources be, okay, go, uh, go ahead and finish your comments, and then we'll.
No, no, it was, that was it essentially, go ahead.
I can clarify. So what happened at the last meeting was, um, the four council members voted in support of the sales tax measure.
Correct.
And they talked about doing the direct arguments and the rebuttal arguments. Councilmember Ayers clarified that he was able to sign a, um, argument in opposition.
Yes, okay. All right. I think we're, okay then, I'm gonna withdraw and rest of my comment. Appreciate the clarification. All right, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and, uh, Councilmember Ayers.
Oh, I was just gonna, uh, the clerk, uh, said what I was gonna say.
Okay, thank you.
And so I just want to make sure I've got it straight. So it's, um, we already approved the subcommittee of Mayor Kranz and Councilmember Hinzey at the last meeting, but this is authorizing, um, Mayor Kranz and Councilmember Hinzey as the subcommittee to determine the three signatories in addition to, in the argument, the direct argument in favor will be signed by Mayor Kranz, Councilmember Hinzey, and three signatories from supporting groups. And then Deputy Mayor Blackwell, Councilmember Lyons, plus three signatories from, from supporting groups to sign the rebuttal.
That's correct.
Yes, that's the, the motion.
And motion carries with Councilmember Ayers abstaining and Councilmember Hinzey absent.
And one point of clarification, an abstention, I think is recorded as yes, is that how? If I recall correctly, in the.
It's recorded as an abstain, but it goes with the majority.
Okay, great.
Nice clarification, you know, I, you don't, yeah, you're okay with what we did, but you don't want to be on the record.
I wanted to abstain, but I, I just wanted to be clear about the recording and whatnot. That I understood correctly.
So, wow. Uh, we're pretty much done. So Councilmember Reports pursuant to AB 1234.
All right. So on, um, May 24th, I attended a San Diego County Water Authority Board meeting, and, uh, we moved to bring our proposed budget to hearing, and that will be heard at our next meeting here in, in June. Um, we were a little bit silent on exactly what would be brought forward at that, at that rate increase meeting, although we gave a lot of consideration to the fact there's some fixed costs that equal about an 11% increase that will be, uh, brought forward as somewhat aligned then with, uh, fixed, uh, flow-through, uh, increases. And then the rest, which could be up to 7%, so a total of 18%, would be the increases. So that's what was discussed. I'm not saying, uh, that that's what will actually end up at our, uh, hearing this month. Because there's been some, we also authorized the, uh, Water Authority to work with the member agencies to try to come up with some creative ways of, um, using money and allocating money so that it would represent a savings to each of the member agencies. And it looked like with initial, um, math that that might be up to a 2% savings. So we hope that we can, uh, come forward with articulating some savings and express what those actually are, and, and that would be beneficial to reduce the 18%. But I wanted to report that. Also, on June 7th, I went to a, um, meeting, uh, tour that the Met and the San Diego County Water Authority put on, which was a tour of the Diamond Valley Lake Reservoir. It's in Hemet, which is in Riverside County. And it's at the Wattsworth Plumbing Plant at the Diamond Valley Lake. And it's a reservoir that was created in 1995 to hold excess water. So it's, it's there to be our backup water in the, in the whole system when needed. We also toured the Santa Rosa Plateau Ecological Preserve in Murrieta, which much of the mitigation money for creating the reservoir went to purchase and preserve. And it's an amazingly beautiful ecological preserve, where we had a tour of vernal pools that were beautiful this time of year. And, uh, it was a 23-acre vernal pool, so it's huge. That's my report.
I attended, uh, on the 11th, a, uh, and seen a wastewater authority policy finance committee. It was a pretty, uh, short, uh, short meeting, and we, uh, approved a revised purchasing policy. So pretty standard, good, good stuff, it was really well put together policy.
Nothing to report.
Uh, I have no meetings to report. Uh, I would like to thank Deputy Mayor Blackwell for attending a, uh, a symposium of the Annual Tobacco and the Environment Symposium, and it was put on, and, um, the city of Encinitas was recognized under my name for our efforts to, uh, address environmental issues related to smoking by banning smoking in our city. It is, it was an award given to the city by the Policy Research Center for Tobacco and the Environment, which is funded by California's Tobacco Related Disease Research Program. And so they took the steps to, um, to recognize the city for the efforts. I, um, obviously, Mark O'Connor and the Environmental Commission, their advocacy for the ordinance banning smoking was critically important. So it's clear that this was a team effort, and, um, it is great to have the recognition from this organization. I thank the Deputy Mayor, she, I had a conflicting schedule, and so, uh, she stood in and represented the city well. So thank you for that.
As did Mark O'Connor, who presented the award to me, so.
Mark presented the award, thank you for that, Mark. And, uh, next we move on to city manager reports.
None at this time.
Come on, you gotta wrap something, that's what Pam does.
I'm sorry, was not prepared for that.
Okay. City attorney reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, I'd just like to update the city council on the status of our grants passed in MICA's brief. The best estimate that I can obtain is that the Supreme Court is expected to issue a decision later on this summer. We don't obviously have an exact date, but I just wanted to update the council.
And hot off the press, you'll send a memo that tells us what we can and can't do as a result of that. City clerk reports.
Based on your action taken tonight, um, once all the resolutions are signed, those will be transmitted, calling the election and consolidating to the registrar voters and the San Diego Board of Supervisors. And then in addition, I'll be updating the municipal election website to include that information as well as argument deadlines.
Okay, and, um, anyone interested in running for the council or mayor would, um, be able to pull papers when?
Starting on, let me get the right date here, July, July 8th. And then the deadline is August 9th. And if an incumbent does not file, then it gets, um, only for non-incumbents, it will be extended to August 14th. And that's all on the website, and, um, additional information.
On the city clerk page of the.
It's on the municipal election page.
Okay, municipal election.
And I update that as I get information, um, and council takes action, then that page is being updated regularly. That wasn't so bad.
... recycling. It's important to keep materials that are made of plastic.